Thank you. I will call this meeting in order at 7:02 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
Okay. One moment, please. All right, so Melissa, you would like to make a motion? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. Brad, you second it?
Yep.
On favor to approve the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
So I just want to read this intro. So, good evening and welcome. We appreciate everybody's attendance this evening. We have two land use applications on the media, on the meeting agenda tonight as follows. An application for rezoning and preliminary plat approval of Park I-35 Industrial Park as proposed by Ryan Companies.
Some people are having a hard time hearing you. If you could just maybe pull the microphone a little bit closer.
I'll try to speak louder.
Okay.
We have two land use applications on the meeting agenda tonight as follows. An application for rezoning and preliminary plat approval for Park I-35 Industrial Park as proposed by Ryan Companies US. This application concerns the zoning of the property as industrial. The subdivision of the property for development and the installation of the public infrastructure. An application for the conditional use permit to allow construction of silos which exceed the city's maximum height requirement of 50 feet in the I-1 zoning district as submitted by Purple Rain Properties LLC. This may be permitted provided certain conditions are met. City staff will be providing background information on each application. Following staff's presentation on each application, the planning commission will take comment from public, from the applicant and then open the public hearing for public comment. We will first hear the application from Ryan Companies, followed by the application from Purple Rain Properties. We understand that there may be individuals attending tonight wishing to provide comment or have questions regarding the proposed Niagara bottling facility. And those comments may not be directly related to their land used application. We will certainly receive those questions and comments. If the comments are specific to the Niagara bottling facility, please provide those during the hearing for the conditional use permit application. All right. Any public comments not related to anything on the agenda?
Can you specify that are we allowed to ask questions about this or not? It didn't quite make sense what you were saying.
Yes, you can make comments and ask questions related to Niagara, but it's, please wait till the second public hearing.
When is that second public hearing?
So first, we're going to talk about Ryan Companies and the rezoning. And then the second one is the Purple Rain Properties.
Just clarifying, thank you.
Yep. No, good question. And then announcements?
There are no announcements.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. So approval of October 25th minutes. Anyone see anything? I did see one thing. I don't know. Let's get to it real quick. So on the last page of the draft, page four at the top, in the first paragraph, it says, "Discussion also took place concerning the I-35 interchange and concerns with traffic capacity." Weber suggested including an article in the future newsletter, but then the rest of the sentence passed tense.
Okay.
So, just sounds kind of funny.
Okay.
But everything else looked good. I don't know if anybody else saw anything?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Change.
Brad makes a motion to approve it with the change.
Seconded.
Tara seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So Renee, did we receive any public comments?
Regarding the applications? We received a number of public comments that came in largely yesterday and today up until, we took comments until 4:00 PM today. They were all printed and given to you on your table and emailed to you earlier and will be provided to the council. We received one, I think, after the deadline of 4:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
So these have been entered into the record that we provide to the council.
Okay.
For the record, we received a comment from Kerry Glenn, Jamie Lenquist, Janelle M. Kuznia, and Mark Engel, Kathy Gage, Deborah Pexa, Lindsay Cornell, individual unnamed, Jen Shepherd, and Betsy Lash.
Did the commissioners get a chance to read these comments?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, okay. I'm going to ask how many of you here in this room and in the other room are planning on to provide public comment on this application this evening? So it looks like we have one?
Nine. Jake will be taking a head count in the overflow room.
Okay.
I mean, are you to say yes now?
It's just to get a general.
Kind of a general idea if we're going to have 10 people or 50 people that want to speak to me.
Will we be hearing the public comment that they have received? The ones that are on the dash there?
Be read into the record.
That will be entered into the public record, so you'll be able to obtain that in the council materials. If they had been received early enough, they would have been included in the packet materials for this meeting.
So they'll be on the website to download?
Yep, in the council packet up to the 15th. Yep.
Great.
Can you guys use your microphones? It's almost impossible to hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Jake, if you're in the back room and you can hear us, how many speakers do we have from the back room besides the one that indicated earlier? Jake, how many head count do we have from the back room?
One.
One.
So here are the rules of conduct for the public hearing. For those of you wishing to address the commission during the public hearing, please raise your hand and wait for the chair to call on you. When you are called upon, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. One trip to the podium, please. Please direct your comments and questions to the planning commission, not, not the applicant or the audience. Each speaker will be heard. The planning commission may ask questions of speakers or ask staff or the applicant to respond to questions. Out of consideration of the number of four speakers this evening, so everyone can be heard, we ask that public comment is limited to two minutes for each individual. If you're in the audience, please be respectful of the proceedings and refrain from sidebar discussions, comments, or other activity which may distract from, may distract the speaker from these proceedings. So next is public hearings. Ryan Companies US Incorporated. Request to rezone property from UR Urban Reserve to Industrial.
And the application for preliminary plat approval of the Park I-35 Industrial Park. Thank you. I'll give a presentation regarding the application. And then after my presentation, we'll turn it over back to the chair for public comment. So Ryan Companies has been working on the industrial park here in Elko New Market since approximately 2012. They do currently and for several years have had an option agreement on the property. A significant amount of planning work has been completed by Ryan Companies to prepare for this industrial development. Examples of such work include completion of ALTA surveys, environmental studies, wetland delineations, geotechnical work, utility extension studies, annexation, and funding of municipal utility extensions to the property. Ryan Companies now has identified a user who would like to locate within the planned industrial park and they are seeking to develop the property at this time. My slides aren't advancing on the screen. There we go. So the, the property in question or that is proposed to be platted and part of it rezoned is shown on the overhead screen. It contains a total of 119.39 total gross acres, which does include some underlying road right-of-way on County Highway 2. There are proposed four outlots and one lot. The single lot to be platted at this time contains 28.09 acres. And that is the lot that is shown in purple on this map that is under contract with a user wishing to locate on that parcel. The property again is currently within the city limits. Part of the property was annexed in 2021 and part of the property was annexed in 2022. The entire property is currently zoned Urban Reserve and just the Lot 1 is proposed to be rezoned to I-1 Limited Industrial. The purpose of the Urban Reserve District is to preserve areas where urban public utilities are not presently available. These lands are to be retained in a natural state or agricultural use pending the proper timing for the economic provisions of sewer, water, streets, parks, stormwater, and other public utility services to the property so orderly development can occur. Municipal utilities were extended to the perimeter of the Park I-35 property during the summer of 2021, which basically makes it eligible to be rezoned to another zoning district. The purpose of the I-1 Limited Industrial Zoning District is to provide for the establishment of warehousing and light industrial development. Industrial uses allowed in this district shall be limited to those which can compatibly exist with adjacent lower intensity businesses and higher intensity manufacturing uses. Applications have been received to rezone the property shown in, in purple. The city's zoning ordinance does specifically identify factors to be considered when the city is considering an application for rezoning. And they are listed here. The proposed action has been considered in specific, relation to specific policies adopted by the city, mostly the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed use of the property is or will be compatible with present and future land uses in the area. The proposed use will conform with performance standards contained in the zoning ordinance. The proposed use can be accommodated with existing public services and will not overburden the city's service capacity. And traffic generation from the proposed use is within the capability of the streets serving the property. So those are the five basic criteria that are to be evaluated when considering an application for rezoning. The city's 2040 comprehensive land use plan, it's the city's vision for what it wants to be, how we want to grow, does guide this area on the east side of I-35 to industrial land uses. Typical uses in these zoning districts would include business offices, manufacturing, warehouse, assembly, outdoor sales, and similar uses. They're typically located near major transportation corridors. And zoning districts that could be considered for this area shown in purple guided to industrial would be I-1 and I-2 and also could consider a planned unit development zoning. So in looking at some of the neighborhood conditions surrounding the property, all of the surrounding land is located in Newmarket Township and is zoned by Scott County as their land use authority. So to the north is of the subject property is basically some rural residential and some light industrial uses occurring on a few of the parcels. It is, the property to the north is guided by our comp plan to industrial and commercial. To the east, the existing land use is rural residential. And then Pillsbury Avenue, also guided by our comprehensive plan to future industrial. To the south of the subject property is a combination of wetlands, agricultural use, and some large lot rural residential properties. Also guided by the city's comprehensive plan to industrial. And then to the west is Interstate 35. This is simply a table. I understand it's probably hard to read at this point, but in every zoning district, there are uses that are permitted, uses that are permitted accessory uses, and then uses that are conditional uses which require a special permit from the city to locate in that district. Permitted uses, should the property be rezoned to I-1, permitted uses within that I-1 district are shown in the dark blue on the left. Lumberyards, manufacturing, research facilities, warehousing, distribution, wholesale showrooms, auto repair. Things of that nature are permitted uses within the zoning district, meaning they have the right to build as long as they're meeting other basic zoning criteria such as setbacks, height, landscaping requirements, and things of that sort. A permitted accessory use is office. So some of the uses that are proposed on the site are consistent with the uses that are permitted or permitted accessory uses. So getting back to the plat itself, so we're considering the application for zoning and plat approval. The layout of the subdivision, our, our ordinance has criteria for lot and block arrangement. We have proposed Lot 1 down here on the, on the east side of the plat. And that lot does meet minimum lot standards, lot and block standards. And then there are two large outlots that are proposed for future development, Outlet A and Outlet C. And they also meet minimum lot criteria for the plating of an outlot. Outlet D, as shown on the submittal, does not meet the minimum criteria for the plating of a lot that would be retained. This is planned to be retained by the developer at this time. And so staff recommends that Outlets C and D be combined into one lot. As the ordinance states that all remnant lots shall, below the minimum lot size requirement, shall be added to adjacent lots rather than remain as a potentially unusable parcel. And then there's one small outlot on the very south side of the property and that is proposed to contain a stormwater pond that would be conveyed to the city upon the filing of the plat. In terms of street standards that are contained in the city code, Dupont Avenue is planned to, the north-south road here is planned as Dupont Avenue. It's primarily a 36-inch wide road within a 70-foot right-of-way except for north, near the north end of the road where it widens out to approximately 54 feet within an 80-foot right-of-way to allow for some turn lanes approaching the County Road 2 intersection. And then as the road turns east and west, the street name will change to 265th Street. This road is also planned to be 36 feet in width and the right-of-way width varies from approximately 85 feet to 106 feet on the south end of the plat. The street will terminate in a temporary cul-de-sac. The street will eventually be extended to the east to meet Pillsbury Avenue in the future when the property to the east develops. The streets as proposed do meet the city's minimum design requirements of the city and have been reviewed by the city engineer. It is, I will note that the, the current street arrangement will result in a temporary cul-de-sac that exceeds the maximum length of a, a permanent cul-de-sac of 500 feet. But because it is considered to be temporary in nature, that is being acknowledged in the approval process or the suggested approval. City code contains requirements regarding tree preservation. A tree inventory is required and has been completed. Based on our code, 40% of the significant trees on the property need to be retained. 60% may be removed. A significant tree is identified as a hardwood tree of six inches in diameter or greater, a softwood deciduous tree of 12 inches in diameter or greater, or a coniferous tree 12 inches in height, or 12 feet in height or greater. There are a total of 404 significant trees identified on the Park I-35 property, 131 of which are proposed for removal, equalling 32.43%, and 273 to be retained. So they, their tree removal plan and preservation plan does meet the minimum requirements of the city code. Easements are another thing to be considered when plating property. There are standard easements that are required around the perimeters of lots that are being platted. 10 feet along perimeters, 5 feet along interior lines, 10 feet along the boundary of any undeveloped property. Standard easements have been shown appropriately on the plat. There is also an easement for stormwater pond. There is a proposed stormwater pond on proposed Outlet D that, again, the developer is proposing for a time to retain ownership of Outlet D. And so we'll protect that stormwater pond through dedication of a drainage and utility easement to the city. And then in this particular plat, there's also additional easements that are needed for additional infrastructure that is planned throughout the property. You can see in yellow, there are easements. Starting on the, on the west side, there's a water line that is proposed to come through the site that will require a separate easement. There are sewer gravity lines and force mains. Also, that will require easements. And those easements have been accurately depicted on the plan sets or the submittal. The lines shown in orange and blue have not been accurately depicted, so any action would require, any action by the, recommendation by the commission would need to include a recommendation for dedication of easements to cover a sanitary sewer force main that will be in the yellow and the blue area. In addition, depending on the final size of the water lines in, in the plat, there may also be a need for another easement where the purple dashed line is shown. And that determination will be made only after the final water line sizes have been determined. So this is just a quick depiction of the sanitary sewer that's proposed in the development. Sanitary sewer became available to the property in 2021. This circle on the left-hand or the west side is where sanitary sewer was stubbed underneath Highway 2 at Dupont Avenue, and that is where it is available. Also constructed at that time was a sanitary sewer lift station at the roundabout and some force main and gravity lines that are coming into that lift station. They're already in place. So the development is served by this lift station. The developer will be responsible for constructing the sewer lines to and through the property. We just brought, the public improvement project just brought it to the perimeter of the site. The utility plans show, the blue are gravity lines and the red are force, force mains. And the lines are sized to accommodate future development within Park I-35 and the surrounding area. Water also became available to the property in 2021 with the public improvement project at the location shown on the west side and with the, in the red circle. The developer will be responsible for constructing all of the water lines to and through the property. Utility plans show the water lines as depicted on this map that are shown in the dark blue lines. And they will be sized to accommodate future development within Park I-35 and the surrounding area. Again, additional easement area may be needed along the west and south side of Outlet A depending on the final size of the water lines within the plat. And we are also accommodating, there is a triangular shaped parcel here that's used for residential purposes currently. There will be an easement dedicated here that a water line could be extended to serve that parcel in the future. So we're forward-thinking in terms of providing services to that property. Also, a water line will be stubbed to the backside of the GNT or Parks Auto property. So at some point, if they wish to connect, that would be available to them. Stormwater, the proposed development will perpetuate existing drainage patterns. The site currently drains in several directions. Some to the north, some to the east, some to the south, and some towards the west. And drainage for new impervious surfaces will be directed into ponds on the property. We have two ponds currently shown that would provide drainage for the road. So the developer, Ryan Companies, will be, is proposing to construct the road in utilities and construct the ponds needed to provide drainage for the roadway. A wetland delineation was completed and accepted by the city in November of 2021. The developer is proposing impacts of approximately 0.4 acres for construction of roads and utilities. A wetland replacement application has been submitted and is currently under review by a technical evaluation panel. That, they consist of wetland professionals that are experts. They consist of wetland professionals that are experts in the Wetland Conservation Act law and Clean Water Act. So decisions on the wetland mitigation is, application are forthcoming. And any recommendations regarding the plat application today would be subject to approval of those applications. This drawing just depicts where there's impacts proposed, and the impacts that are being proposed are primarily for road purposes at this point. The very southern portion of the property does depict a five-hundred-year floodplain that shows up on FEMA's most recent maps. On this very south and western portion of the property, there are really no special requirements for the, it's called the unshaded, or shaded zone X, except that critical facilities such as a hospital or nursing home wouldn't be, the city wouldn't be allowed to allow that type of facility in a five-hundred-year floodplain. Other than that, they are not protected. There are no DNR-protected waters or wetlands on the property. Getting into access roads and some transportation issues. The site is adjacent to county and state highways. I thirty-five on the west side of the property is a principal arterial roadway. The average daily traffic adjacent to the site is thirty-six thousand four hundred vehicles per day, and that is a two thousand and twenty-one count. That number jumps to fifty-seven thousand three hundred vehicles per day north of the interchange. So what that tells us is there are a lot of people using the interchange here in Alcoa Market to enter onto the freeway and go north. There's an existing two-lane bridge over the interstate that was constructed in nineteen sixty-three. It is listed in MINDOT's inventory as being of fair condition structurally. It is not considered to be structurally deficient. County Highway Two on the north side of the site is an A minor arterial. The emphasis for that type of a roadway is on mobility as opposed to access. The current traffic count on that road is fifty-three hundred vehicles per day, and that count is from two thousand and nineteen. The county has requested additional right-of-way be dedicated along County Highway Two to a total of seventy-five feet from the center line of the roadway. They have requested that an eastbound right turn lane approaching the new intersection be required, and that there are two existing driveways, residential in nature, into the property that they be removed as a condition of the plat. This is just a photograph of the existing I thirty-five bridge. Here are some photographs of Highway Two, just coming out of the bridge, near Parks Auto. The middle one is a little bit further to the east, near the Dupont Avenue intersection. You can see the single-family, first single-family driveway. And then the second, or the bottom picture is the furthest, furthest east and does show the second driveway that would be removed as a condition of the plat. This is a depiction of a preferred future interchange design with increasing interest in development surrounding the interchange. The city, the county, the township, and MINDOT staff have worked together in two thousand and ten and again in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen to evaluate design alternatives for a new interchange. The primary purpose of those efforts was to identify a preferred future design, including right-of-way limits, so the city could guide future development around the interchange accordingly, particularly in terms of right-of-way preservation. The most recent effort resulted in the selection of this diverging diamond interchange as the preferred future interchange design. There is no project currently programmed by MINDOT or by Scott County to construct this diverging diamond or reconstruct the I thirty-five Casatu interchange. The proposed Park I thirty-five industrial park plat is consistent with the selected diverging diamond layout in terms of proposed right-of-way dedication and the location of the access into the industrial park. Again, this is kind of a repeat, but Dupont Avenue, the north-south section, and two sixty-fifth Streets, the east-west section. This is to propose to be a local road that would be under the jurisdiction of the city of Alcoa Market. The road would range from thirty-six feet wide to fifty-four feet wide near its north end. Right-of-way ranges from seventy to a hundred and five feet in width, and the road will eventually be extended to Pillsbury. As a condition of the annexation of the subject property that's currently proposed for development, the city of Alcoa Market required that the existing private accesses into one-one-one-one-one Deuce Road, also known as the Parks Auto and G and T trucking site, be removed from Highway Two and rerouted through the proposed development. The preliminary plat drawings accurately depict the removal of these two existing accesses into the property and also depict providing access to the property from proposed Dupont Avenue. The access removal is consistent with the function of the minor arterial roadway, which is to provide mobility as opposed to access to individual properties. This is just a small depiction of a back kind of private road that will serve the Parks Auto site. As part of the plat review, a traffic analysis was conducted. It was completed as part of an earlier environmental scoping document called the AUAR in both two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-one. The previous analyses indicate that further development around the project area, along with normal background traffic that continues to grow annually, will continue to impact the existing interchange and increase delays in certain movements. For these two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-one studies, there were assumptions made regarding the volume of traffic that would be generated from the Park I thirty-five development site. The traffic impact study has now been updated to reflect the actual user that is proposing to locate within Park I thirty-five on Lot One. The user has submitted their actual employee count and shift information and their anticipated truck counts, which were significantly lower than those projected during the two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-one studies for the same acreages. The, the analysis that we reviewed was over the next five years. So the results that we'll review here is, is really a five-year analysis. So the existing traffic operations, these are based on two thousand and twenty-one traffic studies, volumes, counts, observations indicated that we are experiencing some delays on the northbound ramp in the AM peak hour. They're graded in level of service A through F. Level of service D is not considered a failing operation, but it is experiencing some delays. So also noted in the existing operations was eastbound on Two to northbound Thirty-five was experiencing average queue length of a hundred and twenty-five feet of vehicle stacking waiting to turn north. And that was on average and at times up to three hundred and seventy-five feet in length, which start to go onto the bridge. Also analyzed traffic operations with no development. If there were no development to occur at Park I thirty-five or anywhere surrounding the interchange, but just normal background traffic from growth in the surrounding area, which could mean parts of Dakota County, parts of Rice County, Scott County, Lee Sewer County that use this interchange, every year there's normal background traffic growth. And we projected that out for five years. And we see that there will be continued delays, increasing delays with normal background traffic in both the AM and the PM peak hour on that northbound ramp. And then also delays on the southbound ramp in the AM and PM peak hour. So then the next thing that was analyzed was taking the anticipated traffic from the proposed user in Park I thirty-five Niagara and modeling their traffic at their times of the day, adding it to that normal background traffic. And again, there's continued delays in the AM, PM peak hour on the northbound ramp and at the southbound ramp in the AM, PM peak hours. But the level of service with the Niagara traffic, it didn't lower the grade at the intersections on, over just normal background traffic. So one thing that really helps that is that their shift counts or their shift changes take place. They work twelve-hour shifts, and they don't, so the shift changes and turnovers don't take place during our peak hour, which is like a seven to eight AM hour. They take place at six AM and six PM, so they're outside, so that helps. And then their truck traffic is distributed continuously throughout the day. It's relatively low comparatively to what we modeled on that site, for that site, and it's very continuous throughout the twenty-four-hour period day. We also looked at short mitigation measures that could improve traffic operations at the interchange. Short-term mitigation or temporary improvements, we'll call them, were analyzed. The addition of turn lanes at the ramps and on County Highway Two, as well as the signalization at ramps. And mitigation was shown to improve overall performance during peak hours. However, Scott County is not in support of doing short-term mitigation, but to concentrate future efforts and financial investments on the full replacement of the interchange. So even the temporary improvements are quite costly. And so we do have the Scott County Highway Engineer with us tonight. If there are more questions about that later during the public hearing. Both MINDOT and Scott County have provided comment on the plat. They're aware of the traffic volumes. They've received all of the information that we have made available to you. And neither have opposed the plat. Sidewalks and trails, the subdivision ordinance does require sidewalks be installed along one side of all local streets. The plans do not currently depict a sidewalk, so staff has recommended sidewalk be included, at least adjacent to the plat, the lot that is proposed to be platted, but would be open to a deferral of the sidewalk construction along the large undeveloped lots. They'll be, continue to be farmed until they're developed. The sidewalk design will be determined by the city engineer. Park dedication is required during plating of property. City code requires that eight percent of land be dedicated for parks, recreational purposes, open space, or a cash contribution equal to eight percent of the fair market value of the land could be contributed to the city's park fund. The Parks Commission has reviewed this at their most recent meeting, and they're making a recommendation to the Planning Commission and the City Council that cash be accepted in lieu of land dedication in this location. There are environmental study requirements. Minnesota rules require that environmental studies be conducted for projects of exceeding certain size or acreage requirements. And development of Park, the Park I thirty-five Industrial Park does require preparation of a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet, EAW, as required under Minnesota Administrative Rules forty-four-ten, forty-three-hundred. The Minnesota Environmental Quality Board, who is the agency who oversees environmental review processes, has determined that preparation of an AUAR, Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, is an acceptable alternative to preparation of an EAW. The study has been completed. It was completed first in, approved in two thousand and fifteen and was updated in two thousand and twenty-one, adopted in two thousand and twenty-two. And the proposed plat is consistent with the development that was modeled in that environmental study document. The city engineer has reviewed the plans in detail, and he has provided his comments in Redline Plan Set dated November twenty-second. He has provided a recommendation for preliminary plat approval with the condition that revised plan set, a final plan set must be issued before the final plat approval. Scott County has provided comment. Their letter was included in your packet. Part of this was reviewed earlier, but seventy-five feet of right-of-way dedication is being requested along the Highway Two, the right turn lane into the development. They're requiring a street light be installed to light the intersection. A temporary, they noted they will allow a temporary access off of Two for construction on proposed Lot One, but that will ultimately need to be removed. They've noted their desire for the future street extension, local street extension to Pillsbury. A plan, recommended planning for access to that triangular-shaped parcel, one-one-four-three-five Deuce Road. No improvements are allowed within the county right-of-way. Permits are required for all work within the right-of-way. And they made some comments about stormwater management, which will be reviewed by, are being reviewed by the city engineer. MINDOT has also provided written comment regarding the plat. Fairly high-level comments, work within the right-of-way, any MINDOT right-of-way requires permits. A Level One layout and EAW, environmental assessment worksheet for the interchange will need to be updated when an interchange project moves forward. Future interchange layout will need to include pedestrian facilities that will serve this area. And they recommend the developer provide pedestrian connections from the development to the future interchange. Comments were also sought from the Public Works Director, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the Building Official, and the City Attorney regarding the plat. And after the full staff review and comments, the rezoning, the applicant again has applied to rezone a portion of the property from UR to I One. City code addresses procedures for consideration of such applications and states that the Planning Commission shall consider five items when considering the application to rezone the property. Staff have prepared findings for each of those five criteria, and I can go over them and read them out loud if you wish.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. The first criteria was that the proposed action rezoning has been considered in relation to specific policies and provisions, and has been found to be consistent with the city's official comprehensive plan. The finding is the current urban reserve zoning district is reserved for properties where municipal utilities are not presently available. Municipal utilities have been made available to the subject property. Therefore, rezoning the property is appropriate. Rezoning Lot One, Park I thirty-five Industrial Park to I One Limited Industrial is consistent with the purpose and intent of the city's two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, which guides this area to industrial. Second criteria is the proposed use is or will be compatible with present and future land uses. And the finding is the subject site is surrounded by existing and planned land uses shown in the table below, which we reviewed. And the proposed industrial land will be compatible with existing and planned land uses surrounding the site. The proposed use conforms with all performance standards contained in this title, which is the city code. is the city code. The finding is that any development for the site will be required to comply with the applicable provisions of the zoning subdivision ordinance and city code. The proposed use can be accommodated with existing public services and will not overburden the city's service capacity. And the parcel can be served with the city's existing public services, including sanitary sewer, water infrastructure that are available at the perimeter of the site, and the city's overall municipal water system and regional sanitary sewer system. And finally, traffic generation by the proposed use is within the capabilities of the streets serving the property. Traffic, the finding states, traffic generated by the proposed use is within the capabilities of the streets serving the property. Subject property is adjacent to Highway 2 and I-35. Traffic at the interchange is anticipated to degrade to lower levels of service on several movements by the year 2026 regardless of development of the subject property. So those are the findings related to the request for rezoning in relation to the request for the preliminary plat approval. After reviewing the preliminary plat application against the official controls adopted by the city, staff finds that the preliminary plat application complies with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and subdivision ordinance. And there are 24 suggested conditions of approval, most of which we've touched on during the report. You can read them if you wish, but just basically references.
Read those, or we went through most of them, right?
Yeah.
Do we want to touch on the ones that we didn't, or read the ones that we didn't touch on? Do you know which ones those are? That's a long list.
I will just kind of run through them pretty quickly.
Okay.
The developer has to enter into a development contract with the city. Any existing wells located on the property must be sealed and septic systems properly abandoned. Any demolition of any buildings must comply with MPCA requirements and require demolition permits from the city. Proposed Outlets C and D shall be combined into one lot. Proposed Outlet B containing wetlands and stormwater ponds shall be dedicated to the city. Drainage and utility easements shall be dedicated of sufficient area to cover the stormwater pond and proposed Outlet D, that's not being conveyed to the city at this time. Drainage and utility easement shall be dedicated over the force main. That wasn't shown on the original drawings on Outlets A and D. And the developer shall secure a public, there's also an easement that will be needed over the Parks Auto property, that's off of the plat property for construction of the force main, so the developer will be responsible for obtaining that. Additional easements may be needed for that future water line. Upon replating of Outlets A, C, and D, the developer shall provide drainage and utility easements over any wetlands and wetland buffer areas. Upon replating of Outlets A, C, and D, the developer should provide drainage and utility easements over any stormwater ponds or dedicate them to the city. The plan shall be revised to include a signage and lighting plan. Park dedication requirements for the plat shall be cash contribution. The two driveways shall be removed as a condition of the plat. Temporary construction access requires approval of Scott County. Developers shall provide for future access into 11435 Deuce Road from the backside, that's the triangular parcel, and that could just be through easement. Just the condition about the removal of the access for the Parks Auto property is condition number 19. 20, eastbound right turn lane shall be installed. 21, if any drain tile is encountered during construction of the development, the city engineer shall be notified immediately to ensure there are no adverse impacts to adjacent property owners. 22, plan shall be revised to depict sidewalks. 23, right-of-way width at the north end of DuPont shall be widened to accommodate placement of future sidewalks or pedestrian facilities. And then a stormwater maintenance agreement will be required for all private ponds within the plat. And just a few notes, but not conditions, so. At this time, I will turn it over to you. The action being requested by the Planning Commission is that you conduct a public hearing regarding the two applications and then provide a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay. Thank you, Renee. Does the applicant want to provide any comments before we open the public hearing?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, staff. My name is Dan Mueller. I'm with Ryan Companies. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'll keep my comments very brief. That was a very thorough presentation, Renee. Thank you for that. For those not familiar with Ryan Companies, we are a about 90-year-old company, family-owned, founded in Hibbing, Minnesota, and now headquartered in Minneapolis here. We are a builder and owner of real estate, and we've been working on this project for coming up on 10 years now. Invested a lot of time, resources, and energy into seeing this come to fruition, and we're looking forward to discussion tonight and hopefully progressing this development forward. Happy to address any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And just a reminder, before we open the public hearing, please, if you have comments regarding the Niagara Bottling Company, please hold those till the second public hearing. This is just relating to the rezoning of the property from UR, Urban Reserve, to Industrial, and then the permanent plat approval of Park I-35. All right. I will open the public hearing at 7:58 PM. Any comments related to this public hearing, the first one? Yes, please stand at the podium, state your name and address.
Jason Sherman, 1314 Overlook Street. I guess this is more along the lines of a question. One of the things that, one of the things I saw in the presentation was traffic and access to 35 is expected to degrade through 2026. And what I did see was preliminary plats or designs for the interchange from Mindot and Scott County. But what I'm more concerned about is why would we proceed with replating to invite in industrial traffic when we already have a lot of development traffic occurring, when we don't even have an approach on how we're going to handle the interchange in the future?
Okay, I appreciate your question.
I mean, Mindot hasn't, I mean, there's not even any studies out there right now that are looking at what we're going to do for this. So I guess that's my big concern, because I'm sure every resident that lives in town that accesses 35 has very similar concerns that I do to this, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comment. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Lisa Bieber. My address is 11620 Deuce Road, and this whole thing really affects me. I will be living across from all of this, and I am sickened. The traffic that is by my house every day now is terrible. I have cars in my ditch all the time. I have streetlights that go down. Nobody picks them up. There are traffic, there are speeding racers around that roundabout that no one cares about, but I live on that corner. And now you're going to kick out my neighbors, who I really enjoy, that have two little girls, to bring in this new proposal, and I'm just beyond devastated. These are people's homes, it's what we've worked really hard to build, and we moved out to the country to be out in a quiet place, and my house isn't quiet anymore. And now you want to take away some of my easement, you want to take away some of my other neighbors' easements, and you want to take away my neighbors. This isn't fair, and I feel like you've been planning all of this for all this time behind all of our backs. And not once did anybody come to ask what we wanted. There are all things that us people in Elko would like to promote and bring in these businesses to help taxes and help all the others. But we moved here for a reason, and I ask that you please remember that, because not only am I just a person, it's my other neighbors that really care, and we worked really hard to move here. And now you're going to take away easements and my neighbors and all of this traffic stuff. It's so overwhelming, and I feel like shame on all of you that never came to us, to never said, hey, do you want to see anything about this packet? Why didn't we get a packet today? Why did I have to read it up here that I can't even see what my property is going to look like? Nobody even came and asked me. But now I'm going to sit across the building with two 60-foot silos. That looks fun. You want to come live with me?
No.
I'm sure you're excited. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Carlson, and I and my wife live at 26126 Pillsbury Avenue. So we live in the purple section just north of Deuce Road that the city's plan is guiding for rezoning to industrial. That's not my plan. I thought I was part of the city, but I'm not part of that plan. It's pretty clear that this step tonight is a series of steps that started a long time ago, and I regret not getting involved before, but I'm involved now, and I will be involved in the December 15th meeting. I appreciate Ryan putting effort into developing this lot for profit, but I can guarantee you, Lisa, myself, Larry, all our neighbors that live just to the north of that plat that you're going to develop, have put all our effort into that land for years, some for decades, all of it. And we didn't, we didn't move to the country to live next to an industrial complex with lots of truck and traffic noise. As Lisa said, there's already an increase of that with the Amazon develop, you know, development and warehouse miles down the road, and this will only add to it. So we live in Elko, our kids live in the Windrose Edition in Elko, they're raising a family there. We love Elko, we love where we live, and we love this community, and I think these proposals are wrong for Elko and they're wrong for the people that live around it. And lastly, of all places that you could develop in that zone, you pick the place that's adjacent to every resident who lives over there. Why not develop the lot over by 35W and behind Parks Auto where there's no one?
So I'm going to pause you for one second and just ask people in the, just refrain from any comments while the person is speaking. I want to be able to hear everything the speaker is saying.
I can talk louder.
No, you're fine. I just, I just, please ask.
I think I've said what I want to say. I think this proposal's wrong. I don't think it puts the residents that have been here long before the plan was developed first. I think it's putting us last, and I think that's, that's wrong. And I'll be back again to say that to the City Council, because I think the tenant you have slotted there is also wrong for Elko and the surrounding area.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Beth Kohlenhoffer. I'm at 23171 Woodland Ridge Drive. I live far enough away, I'll never see this development, but I drive into Lakeville every day, and I've already seen Lakeville turn into a mini Pittsburgh. That's what it is, it's just an industrial mess. I think everybody looks at Woodbury and Eagan, they have like much nicer developments. It's not a mini Pittsburgh. And I don't know, do you really want this for Elko New Market as well?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in this room want to make a comment related to this public hearing? Yes, you in the back.
Hi. My name's Ally Clement, 26511 Xerxes Trail, right over here in Elko. I guess I don't really have any comments. I would more like to clarify a couple of things. It went pretty fast. I feel like you guys have had this information for a while maybe, and we just are getting it now, so I just want to clarify a couple of things. Can you tell me that the findings for the traffic, are they saying that the traffic is fine now, will be fine later, and there are no, there's going to be no upgrades to the interchange there, the highway interchange, within the next five years?
Sure. So I, I just want to know, because I know other people have comments about the traffic probably too, so maybe we can address all of those comments or questions at the end? Is that a?
At the end of the meeting or at the end of this?
At the end of this. I want to make sure everybody's comments are heard first, and if you have anything else. So I have traffic written down, so we can consult.
So my, my questions are to clarify.
Yep.
Is the traffic, the findings were that they are fine right now? Traffic is fine? The traffic will continue to be fine, even though, even throughout the building of the Niagara plant and the trucks that come in and out, the traffic will continue to be fine, and there are no planned upgrades or mediation?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, she's taken the. Great. Thank you. Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mick Wald, 6345 240th Street, East, Elko, Minnesota. I'll touch on the traffic too. How many posts do we see people dying on 35 right there? I didn't come here to talk about traffic, but now this has got me thinking. You're telling me a grade D and a grade F, there's no change in that, you're bringing industrial works, semis, increased traffic. Are we dumb? You think we're that dumb? You're going to increase traffic fatalities. This is Elko. People live here because they want to be in a small town, they don't want this big city shit. We're not dumb. You're, you're bringing an industrial park to a small town, how is traffic not going to increase? How are you telling me that people sitting going to work in the morning that wait there to get on are not going to be impacted? I own my own businesses, I don't have to sit in traffic. I'm lucky, I'm never going to see this development. I live on the other side of the town, but the people that work their ass off to live here and have land and live that lifestyle are going to be directly affected by this. And you guys, I don't care which side you fall on, yes, no, the fact that it's brought here 10 years after it was brought up to you guys behind the scenes, I've been in hundreds of these board meetings, hundreds. I was an HOA manager. I know what's said behind the tables, behind the scenes for the people that aren't informed of what's really going on. It's sickening. I bought my forever home here, born and raised. I don't know if that's going to happen anymore, and it's all for greed, all greed. Take away the money, there you go. Take away the money, what does this benefit? Who does this benefit outside of whoever's involved in this project? They're pocketbooks. Who else? That's all I got.
Thank you. And please remember, when you make comments, please address the Commission. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jamie Carlson, Jonathan's wife. We live at 26126 Pillsbury Avenue, as I think Renee was calling it the industrial part. We are not industrial. We are 20 acres of land. We have a spring-fed creek that will be going through this whole Ryan Properties, and then it goes in through our land. We are one of the bigger landowners there, and we absolutely will not see our land ever developed into industry. This is something that our children and our grandchildren will be raised in. Speaking of the creek, I have a question. Did y'all know that there's a creek that runs through there, spring-fed, comes from the Vamillion River? Think about that, people. That stuff that you give to your grandchildren, that's not, hey, let's get rich, so I get my big house here and my million dollars there. Y'all get that if you go to heaven. But for right now here living on earth, do your best to take care of your citizens and think ahead of your own grandchildren, someday that will want a treehouse in a tree, and they'll want to go to the creek and be able to catch frogs. Or should we just tell our grandchildren, why don't you just play on top of this big old industry building and climb up those big old silos that are way above the zoning? They're 15 feet too high. That's not Elko.
60 feet too high.
Yep, and we're not.
But they zone up to fit.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Please just address the commission. We're actually not talking.
Are you the commission? Who are you? Could you just say your name? Because nobody back there even knows what you mean. You're the president or?
No, my name is Nicole Weber.
Okay, Nicole.
I'm the chair of the commission.
All right. So, what I'm saying is it's 15 feet over the 50 zone.
One second. I am hearing you, but I wanna remind you, we are not talking about the silos at this time. That hearing has not even been open. We are only talking about re, the rezoning and the preliminary plat.
But you said that we could come up and at least give our.
Yep.
As actually, I got an email that said we had five minutes tonight. Funny how that changed down to two minutes when so many people started raising their hands.
In consideration with everyone that is here, we are limiting it to two minutes.
That's not.
In the very beginning.
You can't change your mind like that, Commissioner.
Ma'am.
You should stick, you should stick to the rules, your own rules. Five minutes, we give you five minutes and now you're gonna change it.
I wanna give everybody the chance to speak. And I, I did ask everybody in the very beginning to, if you have comments related to the silos or the Niagara Bottling Company to wait to the second public hearing.
Oh, we'll be there too.
This one is, this one is not the, related to that.
Okay. Well, we'll be there too. But anyway, those were my other comments as far as, and then Ryan Industry would have to put up, just like they did on Dodd and I believe it's Highway 70, the big huge retaining walls, right? That deflect sound and pollution and I, I know y'all did an analysis on that too. So, there'll be a huge, huge wall built and then all the driveways will have to be rerouted to go onto Pillsbury. That's just something to think about because they would have to do that or they couldn't get out their driveways. Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Yeah, can we close that door? It's like echoey. Thank you. Okay. I know there's one person in the room next door, Kristy Thompson, if you wanna approach the podium at this time and make your comment.
I live at 25831 Pillsbury Avenue and my parents live at 11550 Deuce Road. So, it looks like that would be right across from one of the 11551 Deuce Road driveway that would be removed. So, with that being said, I'm a second-generation resident. My son is five. He's gonna be a third-generation resident in the area. I've been here my whole life and living on County Road 2 at 11550 Deuce Road, there's been a significant increase in noise pollution. It's terrible. I cannot talk to my parents in their front yard. I can't talk to them in their backyard. There's times in their house, we can't hear the TV. Again, this is 11550 Deuce Road. It's terrible. It is terrible. I can't imagine. My dad used to drive truck. I, I know what all the Jake brakes sound like. Not that he did the Jake brakes.
Please, please address the commission.
I'm just saying that it's really, really loud. Another question I had about the I, the I-1 use, I think where it said like along with taproom was a sexually-oriented business. Can someone answer, what is that?
Yes.
What's a sexually-oriented business?
Renee, explain that definition.
Yeah, under, under state law, cities cannot zone out sexually-oriented businesses like a strip club.
A strip club?
Right.
Who wants that?
Nobody. But we can't zone them out under state law.
Okay, well.
And we have to provide a spot for them.
So, so when my sweet little boy is like high school age going to grandma and grandpa's, he can just sneak over to the strip club across the street?
So, let's, I, I appreciate your comments and your questions regarding that additional information.
A strip club.
Cities have, cities have to allow a place for them to locate. We can't zone out uses. And that is the area that was deemed to be most appropriate.
Most appropriate for a strip club across from my kids' grandparents.
So, yeah, and we're not talking about that this evening because that's not on the docket. But I do appreciate your, your question regarding that.
There, and then the shift changes are at 6:00 AM in the morning and 6:00 PM. So, all the cars are gonna be going on County Road 2 at 6 o'clock in the morning right by all those residents' houses. And then the, the trucks aren't gonna be starting up going by at all hours of the day including nighttime, loud trucks. I'm, that's just what it sounds like I'm hearing. Like it's, well, it's not gonna be just one time a day. It's gonna be all throughout the day and the night to be hearing these trucks going by. So, it's just kind of disturbing.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, in the back, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Janelle Kujna. I live at 26775 Grand Avenue. I'm about a mile south of this. And I just reiterate what everybody else had to say. No one spoke to us. We live, these are our homes. Nobody spoke to us that this whole area in 2024, 2040 is going to be industrial. How would you like it? Nobody asked us. Nobody came and knocked on our door. Nobody said, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna turn this all into an industrial park. And too bad if you guys live there. The traffic right now is outrageous to get out of my driveway on, on 267th Street, coming out on Pillsbury and then around the roundabout to get to the freeway. It's crazy and there's no plan. So, what are you gonna do with us? Do you guys wanna pay for us to relocate on some acreage farms away from the industrial park? Would you like to sell your houses? I mean, it's not fair. You never had the conversation with us. Did you? Did I miss it? Did you have a conversation? Did you ask us?
So, the, the comprehensive plan is reviewed every so many years and it's been in development since.
In hiding? And, but did you ever come to us, the people that live there? I'm asking you a question.
There's been public hearings held in regards to the comprehensive plan.
Have you notified us of those that you were specifically talking about changing all the land north of my gravel road into an industrial park?
I'm not in charge of notices.
Regarding the comprehensive plan, I can't say for sure, but in 2015, so the city's been working with Ryan Companies since 2012.
I was at the hearing in 2012.
And in 2015.
And I haven't heard a word about it since.
They've been marketing it for industrial development since that time.
After the record.
Not to us.
There was a meeting in 2012, long ago, that they came and talked to us. We have not heard a word about it since. And trust me, we were there. We were concerned then and we're concerned now. So, I'm asking that you table this until there's some further discussion with the people that live in this community and ask the people in this community whether or not we wanna turn this part of Elko into an industrial park. We live here, we live here. This isn't just your decision. It's everybody that lives in this community's decision. And I'm asking that you table any further discussion about this until the city has an actual public hearing where people can come in and fully understand what's going on, what it's gonna do to their daily commute, what it's gonna do to their environment, what it's gonna do to the pollution in the area. And that is what I'm asking the planning commission to do this evening.
Thank you for your comments. We asked that only once per public hearing and you were already at the.
So, I just want y'all to know that.
Please, please.
Fifteen of you got a letter. Fifteen.
Ma'am.
My neighbor.
Ma'am.
You need to sit down. Give her a break. Come on. Fifteen people. If you wanna tell us after this meeting, I'll wait for you. Fifteen people got notified of this meeting. Fifteen. How did you notify any of us?
So, regarding, I'll address the question regarding notification. Under Minnesota state statute, when there's a land use application, we're required to notify landowners within 350 feet of the property.
I'm within that and I barely got a notification, less than five days. My dad just died and I buried him yesterday so that I could come here today. Do you know what that's like?
I'm sorry.
Are you? You barely gave me any notice and then I had to go through all of that. Now, you're gonna rip apart my property with my kids that I'm trying to raise them on?
When an application is received, the city has only 60 days to process the application. We don't have an infinite amount of time to process applications. So, there's a very orderly time. The application was received complete on October the 28th. We reviewed the application for completeness, which takes us time. When we determined it was complete, within 10 days of the hearing, the state law requires that we send notices to adjacent property owners and publish in the, in the designated newspaper, all of which were done in accordance with the law.
Maybe it should've said in there excluding holidays because you hit all of us right before Thanksgiving and you don't know how many unhappy women called me and said, how are we going to juggle this?
Yeah, it's.
The timing was just phenomenal. And now you're gonna do it right before Christmas. Very cordial. You guys are good planners.
Well, we can't, we can't, when we receive an application, we have to react to it. We don't get to choose when we receive them.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Well, so much for living in the country. My name is Susan McPhee. I'm at 23321 Woodland Ridge Drive. I just wanted to read something. I took a long time to prepare this and apparently I can't read this tonight because it's solely revolving around Niagara. But since we're discussing Niagara basically through the approval of this land, then.
So, the.
Ma'am, you are welcome to speak to that, but that will be in the second hearing this week.
Can you guys further explain then?
It's tonight. It's just after this.
It's still after, so we can still say this, but it's after this.
Yes, there's two public hearings tonight. And the first public hearing.
So, then this up on the microphone does not count for me then?
Okay. Yep, there's two public hearings tonight. And the first public hearing is regarding the rezoning, the property from U R Urban Reserve to industrial and the request for the preliminary plat approval. So, this is the first one we're talking about. The second one will be regarding the Purple Rain Properties. So, right now it's only in regards to the rezoning and the preliminary plat. Yes, please approach the podium and state your name.
I got long arms. You can see me above the podium. Quick point of clarification, there was four lots in this, right? A, B, C, D. And this is just Niagara Bottling is just for Lot A? Or is it for all three slash four of them? One of D being not?
The A, B, C, and D there called outlots, which are usually retained for future development or conveyed to the city. So, outlots are not developable. It's Lot 1 is proposed within the plat and Niagara is proposed on Lot 1.
Okay, so, those are not developable?
Until they're replatted.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you for your question. Okay. Any, I'm gonna ask one more time if there's any other comments related to this first public hearing.
I think we were gonna go back to the traffic, right?
Yes, we are. Yep.
We'll answer a couple of the questions that I've noted.
Do you wanna answer them now or?
Is everybody, it sounds like everybody's finished?
It sounds like everybody's finished.
Okay, so, we do have, I'm gonna give a shot at it, but we also have transportation professionals in the room that were involved with the preparation of the traffic impact study and, and Scott County Highway Engineer is here as well. So, I think the question was, do you think the traffic is okay today? We know that there are, that we're experiencing delays on the northbound ramp in the AM peak hour that result in a level of service D, which is still an acceptable level of service. It's not ideal, but, so, is traffic okay today generally? Yes, we do believe traffic is okay today at the interchange. With normal background traffic and no further development around the interchange, we do know that those delays will continue to increase in the AM and the PM peak hour, some to unacceptable levels. And then also on the southbound ramp, they will start to experience more delays as well.
Is southbound the off-ramp from 35?
Yeah, coming south, yeah. So, those delays will increase to levels of service, well, I can bring them up, but with, and then adding the Niagara traffic, the delays will increase slightly further, but not to change the grade or level of service beyond just the normal background traffic. So, if normal background traffic brings a level of service from a D to a E, the adding the Niagara traffic isn't gonna make it worse than that. It's gonna, the same.
So, to clarify, it's bad now. It's gonna get worse. Niagara would make it even worse, but nothing's gonna be done.
There's no current plan from MINDOT to replace the bridge.
So, what I'm saying is that in order for this to be replatted, right? Isn't one of the things that the traffic needs to be taken care of? You're telling me it's not? So, how can this pass?
It's within the capability of the road to.
I don't think so. I disagree with that finding. And I think anyone with a brain in their head disagrees with that finding. So, one of the findings, one of the five, what is it? Five things? It's not there. It doesn't work. So, no, this should not be replatted.
Renee, Renee, I just have a question. So, there, like you mentioned, there's the A, B, C, D, right? Who creates that scale in?
Mike Larson with Bolton Bank, traffic engineer. The level of service A through F scale is a threshold scale established by FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's a worldwide scale on traffic operations. If that answers the question.
Yes, thank you.
Tony, do you have anything to add?
Madam Chair, Tony Winnicky, Scott County Highway Engineer. So, we all know that it's bad out there right now, right? The, the biggest issue is that the bridge has two lanes. It can only carry so much traffic. And so, we, so we all know that, so.
Please refrain from sign comments so we can hear him. Please, thanks.
That's the issue from a, from a capacity standpoint. So, when we talk about level of service, it's, it's delay along a roadway or delay at an intersection, you know, at whether it's signalized or you're sitting at a stop sign, how long you're gonna wait. And so, when we talk about those letter grades, it's, you know, seconds within there. And obviously, it feels different at a stop sign than it does at a traffic signal. But the biggest issue is you've got, you know, too much traffic for two lanes roadway at the bridge. There is not enough room between the end of the bridge to the ramp intersections to really add a lot of capacity. So, turn lanes, things like that. It's, it's going to back up, you know, beyond and into the through lane regardless. So, we have been working with the, the city staff and, and with MINDOT as well, trying to identify, you know, when is that bridge going to be replaced since it's over 35 and it's, it's technically the state's bridge? When is that gonna be replaced and when is the funding for that going to happen? It's not in their program right now. It's not in our program to fully fund that. It, it's not in our program now from a funding standpoint. We've identified. We've identified from our sales tax funding that it is a project that we're in, a location that we're targeting when that funding comes together to allocate funding for that. But it's not currently in our 10-year program. So when Renee mentioned that, you know, our best efforts are to look, to work with the city, county, and the state towards the long-term solution, that's when we're gonna see the most impact to mitigating traffic in that area. You can only, you can really do so much. A traffic signal, a turn lane that they're gonna back, you know, out of into the through lane really isn't going to have, you know, that big of an impact compared to, let's put the resources into a long-term solution. So when this was conceived originally and what that development might look like in that area, the, the proposed development is considerably less intensity from a traffic standpoint, what would come in and out of there, and more so, those peak times are outside of, either on the shoulder or outside of those peak hours. So if all of that traffic was added in the peak hours, it would be considerably worse. And maybe Rich, Bolton Mank can maybe comment on that a little bit more, but... So that traffic happening outside of those areas won't be felt like it would if, if that all happened within those peak periods as well.
Okay, thank you.
A quick point of clarification, so what I heard you say is that there's no plans for changing that interchange for at least 10 years?
Can you please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Chris Brovold, 4105 Shelley Lane. Just want to clarify that you mentioned, so there's no plans to make that interchange fixed or do anything with it for at least 10 years? It's not in the 10-year plan?
It's currently not in our 10-year plan. Again, we've got intersection, or we've got locations identified in our, our transportation sales tax. And that's one of the locations, but it's currently, because, I mean, there's a large funding app. This is 25 to $30 million.
Yeah, it's a big project. I just want to make sure the timeline I understood.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. And also, just would like to point out that it is a high priority of our city council to continue to keep this issue of the interchange in front of MINDAT continually. We serve, some members of our council serve on committees at the state level, and that is why they're there, to continue to advocate for our, the interchange in Elko New Market and keep it in the forefront.
So it sounds like the city actually, or it sounds like he's saying that it would actually...
I need, I need people to come up to the podium, and if you're gonna make comments and address the commission, and state your name again.
Hi, I'm Allison Clement, 2651 Zerxese Trail, Elko. I was just saying that, you know, it seems like you're thinking, maybe it's not a great idea to have that much traffic on there. So maybe wouldn't you give the city the recommendation to not replat?
I'm saying that the, the traffic that is proposed is, is less than what was originally conceived in the AUAR, and the time of day in which the traffic will be coming in and out of that site is not in the intense times of day, that being the peak hours, the AM and PM.
Because the truckers really pay attention to those rules and go those certain times to make sure.
It's a function of the business.
I mean, do they?
Please refrain from sign comments so we can hear the speaker.
I mean, have you guys seen, like, in Northfield where there's a two-lane? You know, the trucks, they stack up. They don't get their water in time. They stack up and stack up and stack up.
So this is in regards to the Niagara Bottling?
To the traffic. To the industrial, doesn't matter if it's Niagara. If the industrial has trucks, how many trucks a day? 200, 300? I don't think that it is a good idea for it to be replatted because the findings are incorrect, that the traffic has not been considered.
Thank you. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, John Ackerman, 242321 Dakota Avenue. So with the traffic, you are recommending that it's not going to change based off of the shift change? So with the, the companies that proposed in that park development, is it mandatory shift change six and six, or can they change that? And if that does change, will that affect the flow?
We've been advised from the company that the plant manager will have some flexibility to work with his staff, but they will be 12-hour shifts, and they will speak more to that during their part of the...
So potentially, it could be seven to seven, eight to eight, right in traffic flow?
I don't want to speak for them.
Sure, but potentially could, which would then result in more traffic in those peak times. Potentially. Just wanted to clarify.
All right, thank you.
I just want to ask one quick question. I'm sorry I spoke a lot. This is just meaningful to me, but Lisa Bieber, 11620. As I watch people come into the roundabout and look at the four plans of doing the diamond shape, I actually don't mind the diamond shape, even though I'm gonna lose some of that property. But I really ask that you would consider to, whatever you do, is put some more signs up. If you understood what the people that actually drive here from other countries, other states, they don't know what to do at the roundabout. I promise you, come sit at my house, we'll drink a beer and laugh about it because they stand there and they sit there in their truck, and then all the cars honk at them because they don't know to go around a roundabout. You think I'm joking? I'm not, I promise. And it's, it is the J breaks, and we've even seen cars jumping the roundabout. I don't know if you know that, but I have at least four cars in my ditch, as I stated. And so that big area has gotten a lot more traffic since FedEx is a big problem right now. At least for my house, it's nonstop J breaks. So I ask whether you do the roundabout, the diamond, if you're gonna take it, do it the right way, you know, put some more signs up, or, you know, try to help somebody.
So ma'am, you're talking about something being taken. What are you?
Well, part of my easement will be taken, which I understand it's the city. I live on the opposite side, so in order to do the diamond, you would come in part of my property with that other. And that's fine. I don't really want to lose that, but it is part of the city, and I get that. But at, at the roundabout, we're...
There are no improvements as part of this project that are proposed or as part of the roundabout? So...
Yeah, it's being proposed to go to the diamond, isn't it?
The diverging diamond would be at the interchange, at the ramp.
At the interchange, ma'am.
Well, then, I guess, moving forward, then, if it's not gonna be there as the diamond, as much as I don't want to, like, help some people that don't know what a roundabout is. I do, and I get it, and we think it's funny. But the neighbor across the street that we're gonna take his house away has had to have multiple tow trucks because the semis panic, and then they pull in his yard because they don't know what to do.
Ma'am, whose house is being taken away because this property doesn't, only involves, it isn't taking anybody's house?
I understand. I'm sorry. It's just, it's my neighbor, and I really care about him. And when you move to a city to be around other people that you care about, it's hard, and it's difficult, and I am emotional about it. You know, do you have a neighbor that you like?
Of course I do.
Okay, and do you...
Some I don't.
Right, but do you live in, do you live in a nice house? It's hard to let them go, isn't it?
I understand. I'm just saying that we want to be clear with the information, and there have been a couple of comments about driveways being removed and properties being taken.
But see, that's the hard thing is we don't know.
And I'm not aware of any driveways that are being removed except with the commercial property on the corner. And there are no properties being taken as part of this project. It's all being conducted on property that has been under the control of Ryan companies for a number of years. So I just, I'm just curious, when those statements are being made, what properties are being talked about?
And I think, you know, it's like playing the game of telephone. You know, we all want to try to understand, and we all might not know the right thing. But we know that we're hurting right now, and we don't understand, and so we want to understand. We want to know why, and what are we gonna do, and how are we gonna handle it? And so that's, I guess, what I mean.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephanie Adams. I live at 9055 Glenborough Drive. And I just had a couple of comments that might kind of combine this part of the meeting with the next meeting. I had heard that the bridge needed to be replaced. It was slotted at some point, which I think this, the picture's opposite in the other room, but I think it was you that was just talking about that and stating that the state knows that the bridge eventually will need to be replaced. However, it is not in the 10-year plan. We, or there was, not we, but there was construction done on that bridge in the last, sorry, because of COVID, I'm not sure when, in the last year or two, was it? Maybe, just before COVID, maybe?
Yep, yep.
So my understanding was that that was done in lieu of replacing the bridge because it was not within the 10-year plan? Or can somebody explain exactly what? You know, we have a lot more traffic going on because there's additional developments that had started. We have a lot of people from New Prague, Lonsdale, Montgomery, they come across, they come across two to get on the highway. So it's not just the traffic within the Elko New Market area. We have people come up from the south side on Northfield. They come up the side road to get on the freeway, rather than sitting waiting for all those trucks at the truck stop to get on. So if it's not in the 10-year plan, and an industrial park bringing in a new business of hundreds of trucks a day is, starts, or, you know, is approved, then does the state go back and look at that? And say, okay, now we have all this additional traffic, all this additional weight on that bridge, which is already an issue because it's on the radar to be replaced? How does that work? Because when a bridge is replaced, it doesn't just get replaced in a couple of months.
That is correct.
I mean, there's all this time they have to plan. We're still looking at years down the road, even if they decided to replace it today. So now you've got all this traffic and all this new development, and as the development comes, you know, further south, and Lakeville is completely filled up, trucks for Amazon and other businesses are already coming off on two. So how, how does that work? That, to me, the 10-year plan, I mean, it's kind of like we're, like, Elko's not really looked at seriously yet for traffic purposes from the state. They want to do it, but they're not gonna do it.
And that's our job to continue to tell the story and advocate for Elko New Market.
Yeah, I mean, like, every year, if there was, if there was the traffic study done in, what did you say, 2015 and '21? There was a lot of change between '15 and '21. There's been a lot of change between '21 and '22. And there's gonna be a lot more change in the next couple of years. But again, at the earliest of probably getting a bridge replaced, again, if they started looking at it today, we're looking at a couple of years before that even starts. And if this industrial park continues, and there's more businesses that go in that industrial park, that's even more traffic, and the bridge is already questionable. I mean, not that it's, you know, gonna collapse anytime soon, but they obviously know about it. So have a couple of questions. That's, I mean, that's my comment and a couple of questions about that.
I appreciate that, and, I mean, the, the bridge is still structurally solid. If it was at a dire state that it's, it's structurally deficient, then MINDAT would act on it a lot quicker than they are, but, but because it's not in that position, it's somewhere in the pipeline, wherever that is, but it's not in a 10-year plan right now. But it is still structurally adequate.
Right, well, I'm not saying that I'm worried about it collapsing. It's just the fact of, again, the timeline to approve and start a project like that is years in the making as of today, if it was decided. I realize that has nothing to do with us right now, but I'm just saying, if the state decided to, to do that bridge, because we are just outside, we are one exit south of everything else that's been done. 50 is the only one that hasn't been done, and they can't do it, or, you know, decided, once the minimal changes were done, that they couldn't do the other part that needed to be done years ago. So we're just outside that perimeter, but yet we're the fastest-growing area according to industrial because we're getting Lakeville Industrial, we're gonna get Elko New Market Industrial, we're getting the Northfield truck, truck traffic.
So I just, so I appreciate your comments, and again, I kind of want to just remind people to give everybody a chance to comment, just be mindful of the time. So I appreciate your questions and your comments. Thank you. Yes, please. Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Nicole Frederickson. I'm at 26301 Dodd Boulevard. I guess first I'd like a clarification on the slide that was present, during the presentation. It showed that the County Road Two traffic daily limit was measured as of 2019. Since then, they have had the, as everyone's mentioned, the addition of Amazon and FedEx coming down County Road Two. What I would like to see is that the commission order a new count and maybe table the entire discussion until we get actual, real limits and, and measurements, because from 2019 is, I mean, like Kristi and Lisa both said, that's not realistic.
Okay, the, the count that I referenced that was taken in 2019 is publicly published count, I think it was 5,300 vehicles per day. That's published on MINDAT's website currently. For the purposes of the traffic impact study, we did use 2021 traffic volumes. We went out and collected specific volumes in 2021. And you're correct, I probably should have reported that on the slide. So the traffic projections, traffic impact study that showed the impacts at the interchange were using 2021 volumes on both the county road, the ramps, the interchange.
So the levels D, E, F, whatever, those are based on 2021 figures?
2021 figures, yes, that's correct.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head what those numbers are?
I don't have the daily volume with me.
We could provide that.
Because I think a lot of, I mean, that may make a difference as to whether or not you guys would recommend adding more industrial, so that's just my thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment.
Sorry, when was that date or date?
2021.
What, what part of 2021 was it?
I think it was November.
Okay, I'm gonna ask one more time regarding...
So isn't, wasn't that, I can't walk all the way, I just can't do it, so... So you're saying it was 19, or you're saying 2021? That was COVID. You realize that? Because if you drove on the freeway during COVID, it was like a ghost town. It was, it was almost creepy, so how could you do an analysis even in the last three years? Has been COVID traffic?
Well, it was the end of 2021. I think the traffic analysis...
I had COVID.
Everything was open. I mean, maybe, I'm sure that counts are higher now than...
Way higher, because many people, like John, worked from home, so they weren't on the freeway. When they eventually all get called back to work, then they'll be back on the freeway. But Cargill hasn't even called. Their manager's back yet. They're all working from home. So I think we have to kind of think maybe a little bit ahead that, ooh, if COVID ever really does get lit, we're gonna have a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic. All these guys will be going back to work, and that's really scary on the bridge.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask one more time. Anyone want to comment related to this public hearing?
Okay. Can I ask what the next steps are here?
So we close the public hearing, and then the commission talks, has a discussion about this, this applicant.
And then, and you have a discussion, and then?
And then we take a vote.
I think she's asking more broadly, Madam Chair. I can give a quick overview of the process.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
So with an application of this sort of land use application, it will go to the planning commission. The planning commission is an advisory body to the city council, so they will make a recommendation on the application. They also hold a public hearing to gather public comment that will, so that they can use that information in the consideration of the recommendation. That recommendation will be sent to the city council. The city council is scheduled to consider the applications at their December 15 meeting. That will be at 7 o'clock PM. And I'm gonna do a little plug here, guys. Follow us on Facebook, go to the city's website. There's an FAQ there. We'll update meeting dates, and also the New Prague Times is where we do our public notices. dates, and also the New Prague Times is where we do our public notices. So if there's any changes from what I'm telling you tonight, it will be posted in those locations, so people are aware of it.
So will you be doing the vote tonight? Or is that in the discussion in the vote, or is that a different meeting?
So the vote, which is the form of the recommendation from the Planning Commission, will be tonight, unless the commission decides to continue the discussion. Although we are time limited by state laws to how long we can consider, we can consider an application.
You can extend that, though.
That can be extended, yes, but you do have to have a, a basis for that. You cannot do it arbitrarily.
I'll cry.
So will you say that there's a discussion?
Unfortunately, not one of the reasons.
I'm sorry, when you say that there's a discussion, you're going to discuss everything you've heard tonight from the public forum, correct?
They will take it, they will have the discussion that they feel is necessary to arrive at a conclusion. They've heard everything.
We'll be back here today?
Yes, they will have.
And then they'll vote?
Unless they continue it, yes, they will make a vote on a recommendation to the council, and then the council will receive it on the 15th, where they will be asked to make a decision. The council can continue it as well, but keep in mind, we're still within that statutory timeframe that we have to make a decision as a city and respond. So that would be the normal process pending any continuations. The Planning Commission would consider it tonight. They would make a recommendation to the council. The council would consider it on the 15th, and everybody is definitely welcome back on the 15th. Keep in mind, tonight is the hearing. The council may, and often does, take additional comment at the council meeting. That will be at the discretion of the council. The hearing is actually held here. And they will also be, in addition to considering this land use application, the land use application for the conditional use permit for the higher silos, they will also be holding public hearings related to public subsidy requests by the business at the council meeting as well. So even if they don't hold a hearing on the land use stuff, they're going to hold hearings on the public subsidy at which, of course, they will take any public comment that comes forward.
Thank you, Tom.
It seemed like this was kind of the cart before the horse, that they're.
If, if you're going to speak, please approach the podium. All right, well, I will ask one more time for comments related to this and the public hearing.
I actually have one more question.
Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Tracy Kern, 26441 Windrose Court. So it's actually for you. Can I show you a picture?
Yes.
So when you guys say you're not taking away anybody's properties, which I know that this is the plan for right now, this is where the neighbors live, the little kids that she's talking about. These are where the rest of the people that have been talking live. And then this big chunk is my parents' land. So it's all in a thing. It may not be happening like right now, but even if it was 30 years from now.
So I'm going to explain what we're looking at for the benefit of the rest of the audience? And it was Tracy?
Yeah.
So what Tracy showed me is a picture, and I'm not exactly sure what the source was, but it looks like it might have been a, a picture from an environmental study. And I'm just going to back up.
But you guys actually showed pictures of it tonight, too?
Yep, but I'm, I'm going to back up. So there is, and this is what happened, there was a story that came out on this. The reporter for the story used a graphic from the AUAR that improperly depicted the area of what the industrial park was going to be, and it created a lot of misunderstandings of where it was going to be. It was not provided by the city. We advised the reporter, they corrected it. Now, the graphic that you are showing shows the industrial park and it shows the larger AUAR area.
Yes.
An environmental study or even land use guidance doesn't take anybody's property. We can't make you sell your property. Somebody else can do what they want to do with their property next door. It's actually unconstitutional for us to take your property for economic development. That was a decision by the United States Supreme Court, what, 20 years ago? About 20 years ago. This is the city attorney, by the way. I always check legal claims with her. And so here's your phone back. And so just simple guidance, a property does not take somebody's property. You still have to decide if you want to sell your property to a developer or develop.
So that, but the question is, is like you guys keep showing these maps of, of that, of this.
I showed them.
So I don't understand why that's keep being, because I think that's a lot of what, like what's happening.
So I showed a map that had a lot of purple on it, that probably included a lot of your properties.
Yeah.
And what that map means is that as the city grows, that's where we want industrial.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We want this to be an industrial area.
Please refrain from side comments, so we can hear.
That is where we planned industrial to occur.
Right.
But we're, the city, city council. It's an adopted plan of how the.
We as a city council want that to be industrial.
At which time you choose to sell and develop your property. We aren't going to.
Sell for like 10 million?
Please, please address the commission.
No one's going to sell.
I'd say 50 million, we'll sell.
Can we do one comment at a time, please?
I'll say 50 million, we'll sell.
But I'm just saying, it is, it is being, it's in your mind that that is what we would like to do, and as homeowners aren't, no, it's not.
It's not in our mind what, that's what you would like to do. That's how the city has determined it would like to grow. There are areas.
Please refrain from side comments, so we can hear everything.
So there are areas in the city that we have planned for commercial development, where we'd like to see retail and office and gas stations. And there's areas in the cities where we like to see multifamily housing. There's areas in the city we'd like to see single-family housing development. And we plan that out. So as we grow, we know what the, where those areas will be. It's a plan. It's our plan, how, how we want to grow. We want, we don't grow unless we, there's willing sellers and willing buyers and willing developers.
Okay.
And just to correct one.
So that is our lots, our, our areas are fine, even though it keeps being shown.
It's a projection.
Okay.
And tell a property owner, so for instance, I heard somebody say that's what they'll let you do when you sell. That's not correct. That's what we would like it to be, but somebody still needs to want to sell their property to a developer. A developer still needs to, wants to develop or redevelop the property for that use.
Okay.
Down the road. So simply guiding it does not take anybody's property.
Okay.
And currently, except for the industrial park, all of those properties aren't even in the city limits, so aren't even subject to city regulations until they come into the.
Don't you guys think it would be like a better idea to actually show like a 3D little thing of what, what do you live on this street, across the street from it? This is what you're going to see. Because if it was like way down, besides the traffic is going to be horrific, but if it was way down and it wasn't like a view, or whatever, like, you can't just put up a little boundary map and be like, this is where it's going, because we don't understand that. We drive by the Amazon building and we're like, that's what we're going to have there now? Like, that's going to be horrible. So maybe on that type of like planning part, you guys come up with an actually like thing we can look at and understand. The road thing, obviously, that's not happening. So I think none of us can really understand what this is going to look like and what this is going to do, especially when the map colors are messed up. But.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate the comments.
One other plug, I would encourage that after the meeting, if anybody has any questions, certainly give us a call. We're happy to spend as much time as you would like to answer your questions in person or on the phone. We can answer email questions, although that's not as efficient. We're happy to do that as well. And you can, you can speak either myself or Renee. Renee would probably be your first contact on the details of these land use applications. She's the staff person that has processed them. If it's something more related to some of the other aspects, call me. And if it requires an expert such as the city engineer, our consulting hydrogeologist, or somebody at the county, we can help connect you with the person that can get you the answers.
Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Deb Pexa, and I live at 18066 Willy's Way in New Prague. And I just want to say that Tom is correct. I spent some great time on the phone with Tom, and he gave me great information, and he contacted other people. But what I'll say is, and what I'm hearing tonight, is that that's a conversation you and I are having, and all these other people aren't hearing that information. And over and over, I'm hearing tonight that there's key information that this community has not gotten, and that is on the city's leaders to make sure they have that information. So I agree, and I will probably call you again and ask for more information, but the city needs to do more to be getting this out and having a transparent conversation. You have some city guidelines that talk about your organizing principles, and the top one is transparency and participative government. That's not what I'm hearing that's happening tonight. So I just want to challenge you all to have those broader conversations.
Thank you. If there are no more, oh, yes, please.
Can we hear, number 15 in this room? And then you have the overflow room? Okay, because I got back, WCCO, K-11 News, KT, KSTP, and Fox 9 have all been invited, and they've all contacted John and I. And just so that we have enough room for our reporters, I think that's really important, because then the news goes up, and then the transparency is formed.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, if there are no, are no other additional comments related to this first public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:02 PM. Commissioners, thoughts, questions, comments? So I want to, I guess I want to remind the commissioners to look at the, the five questions, or the five things, the criteria. I, 21, yep. Well, it says 26 at the top. All right. So if, if, I want to be able to hear everybody in the commission as well, and I think you, you would probably want to hear us too. So if you can refrain from side comments, that'd be great. Thank you. So in regards to the rezoning, the criteria we have to meet, the proposed action has been considered in relation to the specific policies and provisions of, and has been found, right? So it basically has to meet the comprehensive plan used, right? Okay.
Can you speak into your microphone?
Yes, sorry. So we are looking at if this meets the comprehensive plan projection, which do, does anybody, the commissioners have any comments related to that?
I think, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I think what we have heard tonight is that a lot of people felt like they were not aware of the comp plan that we have had. We, over the last couple of years, we have updated our 2030 comp plan to the 2040 comp plan. There were a lot of, I don't want to say there were a lot of changes, but there were some modifications from the 2030 comp plan to the 2040 comp plan. I know that I had gone to a couple of open houses. I am not aware, though, how the information had been shared out to the general public. I know I did see it on Facebook at one point, and I know, again, I'm on the Planning Commission, so I get the additional emails. But as regard, in regard to the request for the rezone from the urban reserve to industrial, the application, the request is appropriate.
Thank you. Other comments from the commissioners?
Over 20-some years ago, I got involved because I felt I needed to do something to be a change in it, so that's why I've been on the planning and zoning for well over 22 years. So I welcome people of the city to join on and be part of the membership of the committee that we're on, or be on any other committee that's involved with the city to be a, a part of the solutions, I guess. And then also, I think we all have to be part of a solution with the state to get our bridge issues addressed at a state level, because that's where it's got to start.
Thank you. So I know in regards to this rezoning application, there were 24 conditions that needed to be met?
That was the preliminary plat.
Oh, oh, sorry.
There's suggested conditions related to the application for preliminary.
Thank you, I found it. Okay. Does anybody have any concerns regarding the preliminary plat conditions, those 24 that Renee read through? Are we all in agreement of those 24? Yes, okay. So let's first talk about rezoning of the property. The, are, are we ready to make a, a vote on the rezoning piece? Yes? Okay. So rezoning the property from UR Urban Reserve to industrial, you want this separate, I'm assuming, right? These two things? Okay.
Actually, I have a comment.
Yes.
Did we ever get comments from the business owners in that area about this rezoning at all, the Parks Auto or AT Trucking?
Were they notified?
No. The, the landowner that owns and rents to all of the businesses there is one of the principal landowners that's selling the subject property to Ryan Companies. So I believe that if he's not communicating with them, I, I would think that he is. So it's common ownership. The individual or principals that own the GNT Trucking site also own these two farms that are under purchase option agreement.
Okay. So let's take a vote on rezoning the property from urban reserve to industrial.
Just lot one.
Yeah, just the first, the first one.
Proposed lot one.
Yes, lot one. All in favor?
Can we get a motion?
Oh, sorry, make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You want a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Did you literally just say that you understand people are feeling they have not been notified, but it doesn't matter? Is that what you just said?
Wow, you two are amazing. They both said at the same time.
I appreciate your comments, but we need to focus on, this is the public hearing, the public hearing is actually closed, so this is the, the commissioners' discussion. So for the request of the preliminary plat approval of Park I-35, everyone kind of said they're in agreement with the 24 conditions.
I had a couple of questions on that one.
Sure.
GNT and Parks Access Road, it seemed kind of restrictive, doesn't it? I mean, for semis and whatnot to go in there, so.
Yes, there is a, another drawing that has been submitted in, in concept, and as mentioned, there will be a final plat drawings that will be submitted, final construction plans, and we have been advised that the curve in the road will be softened a little bit. So that will be easier for trucks to maneuver.
I also had a comment about the, that those prop, that property is not hooked up to water and sewer at this time, is not proposed to be, it probably should be, wouldn't it, as part of the?
That's correct. It's, it is not hooked up to water and sewer, it's not proposed to be hooked up in the immediate future. It would need to be annexed into the city in order for that to happen. The city would not provide municipal utilities to the site unless it was annexed. At this time, there has not been a petition for annexation on that property.
We are setting the stage that all of the properties surrounding, adjacent to the site can be served from, from the site. the site, so.
I know it's the same ownership, though, but that's kind of what I was alluding to. That, I guess it's not part of the sale. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Correct.
But the access road and the closing of the access from to is part of the thing.
Yeah. It's, it was part of the negotiations or sale.
So I was wondering if this could be part of their negotiation or that's beyond the scope.
It's beyond the scope. I think that, you know, he's, the landowner is providing a place for businesses that are, you know, valuable to our community. And they want to remain in the township at this point. And he's getting revenue renting to those businesses. At some point, he has indicated he would like to sell and redevelop that when the time is right.
All right. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments related to the 24 conditions? Does the commission feel ready to vote or make a motion on the preliminary plat?
Do we have the plat up or?
The drawing?
Yeah. That was the redlined ones you're talking about?
This is the preliminary plat that you'd be approving. It would consist of one platted lot, one outlet to be conveyed to the city, Outlet A for future development. And we're recommending these two outlets be combined into a single outlet for future development. So it would be three, one lot and three outlets.
So we feel ready to make a vote, make a vote on this?
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Brad makes the motion to approve.
Can you modify that to include subject to the 24?
Oh, yes.
Subject to the 24 notes. On page 23.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Right. So the second item under public hearing is Purple Rain Properties LLC. And I'll turn it over to Renee.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the application for conditional use permit to allow for increased building height. Applicant is Purple Rain Properties LLC. Purple Rain Properties is an affiliate of Niagara Bottling. And they have conducted a site search for a location to construct a bottling facility that would serve the Twin Cities metropolitan and surrounding area. The site search was conducted during late 2021 and 2022. The city of Alcoa New Market was informed in June of 2022 that we had been selected as their preferred location and that they intended to work with Ryan Companies regarding possible site acquisition and purchase agreement. City staff was later advised that Niagara had a purchase agreement on the proposed site, I believe in September. And on October 28th, 2022, the city received a complete application for conditional use permit to allow construction of silos which would exceed the city's maximum height requirement of 50 feet in the I-1 zoning district. Purple Rain Properties, Niagara has a purchase agreement on Lot 1, Park I-35 Industrial Park. Development of the industrial park is proposed by Ryan Companies under separate land use applications, which you just considered. Lot 1 is proposed to be zoned, I-1 Limited Industrial, which you also just considered with a positive recommendation for approval. The proposed zoning of I-1 is consistent with the city's 2040 comprehensive land use plan. Purple Rain or Niagara is proposing to construct a 425,209 square foot facility on Lot 1 where the following uses are being proposed. Manufacturing of plastic bottles and caps, treating, testing and bottling of water and possibly other beverage, beverages.
Can we refrain from side comments? Sorry.
Warehousing and distribution of bottled beverage products and accessory office use. Again, this is the location of the proposed Niagara site, shown in purple within the plat. This is a high-level depiction of the proposed site layout, including building, parking lot, loading area and trailer parking area and stormwater ponding. So the building, proposed building is shown in white. Parking for employees and office area is shown on the south. This is truck, trailer where they would load the facilities and then drive out, exit on the west side of the building. Here on the east side of the site is a proposed stormwater pond. Again, these were kind of reviewed during the earlier land use application by Ryan. But the uses proposed by Niagara are considered to be manufacturing, warehouse, distribution and office. And these uses proposed are considered to be permitted uses within the city's I-1 zoning district. There are minimum lot requirements in the I-1 district. And they are a minimum lot size of one acre, minimum lot width of 150 feet. There are minimum buildings setbacks from various types of roadways, side property lines and rear property lines. There's also a maximum height requirement listed in the I-1 district. It states maximum height of 50 feet, except as provided for in section 11-5-2 of the city code. And 11-5-2 of the city code identifies the exception to the height requirement as follows. Buildings in excess of the district's standards may be permitted through a conditional use permit, provided that the site is capable of accommodating the increased intensity of use. The increased intensity of use does not cause an increase in traffic volumes beyond the capacity of the surrounding streets. The public utilities and services, including fire protection services, are adequate. And for each additional 10 feet above 35 feet in height, front and set, front and side yard setback requirements shall be increased by 5%. Again, this is the building, a little different view of the building proposed on the site. The silos are proposed on the southerly end of the building. Three are proposed at 60 feet in height and three are proposed at 65 feet, nine inches in height. Two would be constructed at this time and one potentially in the future.
I can butt in for a minute. I've been advised that there are vehicles parked in front of the fire department doors, which may impede the fire department's ability to respond to a fire call. So if you've parked a vehicle straight out from the fire department board doors, if you could please move it, that would be greatly appreciated. We have vehicles parked in front of the fire department.
Oh.
Yep.
Either side or do they know?
Just not in front of the doors because those vehicles are big enough, they need to be able to go straight out, so.
Ready? Okay. And this is just a little more zoomed in drawing, which depicts the location of the six towers that may exceed the city's 50-foot height requirement, five of which would be constructed with the initial building and one could possibly be added at a later date. The 60-foot tall silos store resin and the 65-foot, nine-inch towers store water. Looking at a, this is a clip of a building elevation, looking at kind of a side view of the building. The building will range, the building itself will range from about 37 feet to about 42 feet in height with various parapets. And then you can see how the silos extend above the proposed, are above the sidewalls. Oops. In evaluating a conditional use permit, so any conditional use permit, there are certain evaluation criteria. And then in addition, there's the extra four criteria related to the height. And I've listed the criteria for granting conditional use permit here. And we can review them with the findings. The proposed action has been considered in relation to specific policies and provisions. It has been found to be consistent with the city's official comprehensive plan. Allowing additional building height for silos in conjunction with the proposed industrial building is consistent with the city's 2040 comprehensive plan by supporting the economic development goal, which calls to attract, expand and retain businesses and industries in Alcoa New Market as a means of adding value and diversifying the city's tax base. The proposed use is or will be compatible with present or future land uses in the area. The request for additional building height will be compatible with present and future industrial land uses and will conform to all applicable performance standards contained in the zoning ordinance. The proposed use conforms with all performance standards contained in the title. The proposed increase in building height conforms with all applicable performance standards contained in the code, including a requirement for increase in front and rear yard setback, front and side yard setback requirements. The proposed use can be accommodated with existing public services and will not overburden the city's service capacity. The request for the increased building height to allow construction of silos has no impact on the intensity of use of the site and will not impact the city's service capacity. Existing public services, including fire protection, can accommodate the increased height. Traffic generation by the proposed use is within the capabilities of the streets serving the property. The increased intensity of the use height does not cause an increase in traffic volumes beyond the capacity of the surrounding streets. The city finds that increasing the building height doesn't, or the silo height has no impact on the intensity of the use at the site and will not result in an increase in traffic or go beyond the capabilities of the streets serving the property. The site is capable of accommodating the increased intensity of use. Some of these are a bit redundant, but construction, constructing silos at 65 feet, nine inches in height has no impact on the intensity of the use on the site. Public utilities and services, including fire protection services, are adequate. Public utilities and services planned to serve the site are adequate. Fire protection services can accommodate the proposed 65-foot, nine-inch high structure as confirmed by the fire chief. For additional, for each additional 10 feet above the 35-foot height, front and rear yard setbacks shall be increased by 5%. The finding is based on the proposed height. The front and side yard setbacks shall be required to be increased by 20%, resulting in front yard setback of 36 feet and a side yard setback of 12 feet. The location of the proposed silos does meet the increased setback requirements. The provisions of 11-4-5 of the title are considered satisfactorily met. And they relate to essential services and are proposed to be met. The application for conditional use permit to allow increased tower height has been reviewed by the city engineer, public works director, the police department, the fire department, the building official and the city attorney. Particular interest, again, of the fire department. This quote is from our fire chief. The Alcoa New Market Fire Department has looked over the proposed plan and sees no issue as we have equipment to reach the proposed structure heights. The planning commission is being asked to hold a public hearing regarding the request for conditional use permit for the increased silo heights and provide a recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Renee. Would the applicant like to, or representative from Purple Rain Properties like to make a comment?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, City Staff. Appreciate everybody's time tonight. My name is Alan Ketchpool with Kimley Horn Engineering on behalf of Niagara Bottling. We completed the civil landscape stormwater design for the site. Apologize, nobody from Niagara is available tonight with travel and snow delays. We had one that circled, got sent back, one made it halfway. We do have Patrick Drennan online, so appreciate the city being able to set that up. He would like to give a little quick presentation, a little overview on Niagara.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Madam Chair, Plan Commission members, staff and interested residents. My name is Patrick Drennan. I'm a Senior Economic Development Manager with Niagara Bottling. We did have, as Alan indicated, three team members attempt to make it there. I couldn't get out of the airport in Milwaukee while the other two flew halfway there, almost made it, but couldn't land with the weather. So we apologize for not being there in person. But Alan is contracted by us at Kimley Horn and can answer some technical questions about the silos placement height or other site-related issues. If I may, I just wanted to take a few seconds to provide a brief overview of the company and the project and perhaps even address some questions that had come up tonight. I know it goes a little bit beyond the scope of the conditional use permit regarding silo heights, but I think it might be appropriate based on the conversation tonight. So if you'll indulge me. Niagara Bottling has been family-owned and operated since 1963. Our company is headquartered in Diamond Bar, California, and is a leading beverage manufacturer in the US, working closely with some of the most, some of the largest brands, retailers, grocers, club and convenience stores throughout the country. We do produce a variety of beverages, including bottled water, sparkling, vitamin and flavored water, teas, sport drinks, ready-to-drink coffee, protein drinks and non-gary.
Please refrain from side comments because I really want to hear his presentation. Thank you.
Doesn't everybody say back here, we've heard all this?
That's great, this is the public hearing, so this is part of the process.
Our commissioners have not heard this.
They haven't?
No. They have not.
This is part of the process, so please let us follow the process. Thank you.
By 2024, Niagara will operate approximately 46 beverage production facilities throughout the US and Mexico with facilities located in 24 states and generally located in or near major markets. The finished beverage products are distributed on a regional basis to customers or consumers within those market, within those major metropolitan markets. We make significant effort to hire locally and regionally and have over 7,000 full-time team members employed throughout our operations in North America. The, as part of tonight's agenda, Niagara is proposing construction of a new 425,000 square foot manufacturing facility, as you saw earlier, on a lot that we plan to purchase in the I-35 Industrial Park. The project would include approximately $135 million total capital investment from Niagara, including the purchase of the land, constructing the new facility and purchasing and installing production equipment on site. Niagara proposes to produce half-liter purified water products for our customers in the Minneapolis-St. Paul region. Niagara proposes to produce half liter purified water products for our customers in the Minneapolis-St. Paul region. And we anticipate eighty five percent of the finished product would be delivered to customers in either Minnesota or Wisconsin. With the remaining fifteen percent of the product delivered to customers in North Dakota, South Dakota and Iowa. So would definitely be a regional distribution of finished product. We expect the project would create approximately fifty nine full-time positions at the new facility to start. With total initial payroll exceeding four million dollars annually, we're averaging over sixty thousand dollars per job. So for hourly pay, pay could start between twenty dollars and forty eight dollars an hour, not including overtime for hourly positions. With salary positions paying sixty five thousand dollars and up and for opportunities for annual bonuses. All full-time positions are eligible for a full complement of benefits, including health, dental and vision coverage, retirement with company match and more. So we offer high quality, locally-based jobs. Any future expansion projects, including installation of future or new production lines in the existing facility would include significant future investments in Elko New Market and creation of up to an additional fifty to sixty jobs at initial estimate. So in fall, in the future, it's at full build-out at some point to be determined. We could see approximately a hundred and twenty local jobs based there in Elko New Market. We're extremely excited about moving forward with this project in Elko New Market. As a privately held and operated company and prospective local employer, we will become an active member of the local business community and will support many local community initiatives with product donations and sponsorships. We have a strong track record of giving back to the community, including supporting causes involving healthy living, children, families, charities and supporting first responders. We are active partners with local municipalities and school districts in the communities in which we are located. And Niagara also participates in disaster recovery and relief efforts throughout the country. In closing, we are proud of our track record of under-promising and over-delivering in the communities in which we operate. Consistent with the guiding principles of our eighty four year old founder, Mr. Andy Pekoff Senior and his son, Andy Pekoff the Second, our current president and CEO. And we look forward to doing the same in Elko New Market. Couple of things I wanted to add to those prepared statements were as follows. There was a question earlier about truck traffic. I believe we did share a letter with staff that indicated we anticipate approximately fifty five trucks per day would enter the facility. So that's about two to three per hour and that would be throughout the day, not concentrated at peak hours. Those fifty nine projected employees would work on four shifts. So not all fifty nine employees would be on site at any particular time. If we assume that ten of those staff members are plant management team or salary positions. And the balance, let's just say forty eight, for the sake of math, are split between in four shifts of twelve. Then you can anticipate somewhere between, let's just say twenty five and maybe thirty team members onsite at any one time. And again, those shifts would likely change at off-peak hours. And a future plant director would definitely work with the community to schedule the appropriate time for shifts to begin. Finally, I just wanted to touch on a couple of other points in terms of fiscal impacts. In addition to our over four million dollar initial payroll, we anticipate or project annual property tax generated on site of approximately one point eight million dollars. We anticipate utility revenue between water and sewer in year one could exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, total investment on site anticipated to exceed a hundred and thirty five million dollars. We look forward to answering any questions you might have and working together closely with the Plant Commission and the community to move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for the request for the conditional use permit to allow construction of silos which exceed the city's maximum height requirement in the I one zoning district. Sure, I can redo that. So again, I want to remind people, please address the commission. Please hold back side comments because it is hard for us to hear when people are talking and we want to know, we want to hear them, we want to hear their comments. And please be mindful of your time because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of comments regard, regarding this topic. So I really would like to stick to the two minutes and please try not to repeat yourself over and over again so we can get everyone up to speak who wants to share their comments. Okay, so at this time I'll open the public hearing at nine thirty seven P.M. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Emily's Wayber, two five four two zero, Natchez Avenue, Elko. Just was, point of clarification, why was the industrial zoning fifty feet for silos? And what would make us consider, you know, why, why, why was that in that we could consider that for the, for being higher?
You're talking about the city requirement of the fifty feet?
Yeah, what was the reasoning, additional reasoning for that? And should we consider the additional reasoning for the additional heights?
So the city has ordinances?
Yes.
What's the rationale?
Well, the maximum height for buildings in the I one zoning district is fifty feet. And that is really, it was determined because the market, industrial buildings, instead of getting bigger, they're getting taller with the new techniques that are available, like through Amazon to stack higher. That's a typical height that's allowed in an industrial zoning district, so it's just-
It's an arbitrary number.
It's based on industry standards.
Correct, it's not arbitrary.
It's not arbitrary.
Standards for that type of-
And Dan can probably speak to it as well, but-
And the reason for the sixty five is the way the ordinance is set up is you can automatically do up to that height. But the ordinance says you can go higher, but you have to increase your setbacks. So it's not a hard fifty feet, it's saying it's an easy fifty feet if you're there. But if you want to go more than that, you have to pass a higher test, which means you have to have bigger setbacks. And we have to have an opportunity to look at it and see if that additional height is going to create a specific issue. And if it does, is it something that we can correct with additional conditions on, on the permit?
Thank you. Yes, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Susan Mcfee, two three three two one, Woodland Ridge Drive, Lakeville. All right, let me state that the letters just sent out last week only to the residents that live within three hundred and fifty feet are not the only ones that are affected by this monstrosity that wants to set up shop. Niagara's line of work involves taking water from a source that a lot of people, both in and out of Elko New Market rely upon. It seems that similar tactics were used when Niagara tried to move into Eau Claire. In an article dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, it stated, "A California-based bottled water company's proposal to build in Eau Claire had been kept under wraps for months while a deal was being worked on. But then it became public a week ago as a project sought the city council's approval. The constituents were caught off guard by the major proposal and concerned about its use of municipal water. Their council members were smart enough to delay and educate themselves on what could have been their city's number one water user. A leader in the bottled water industry, wow, now that's a title that every city strives to obtain. As a resident, I'll sleep better knowing how proud I will feel living in a location known as a leader in the bottled water industry." In a flyer titled "Building a Niagara-Elko New Market Partnership" on Niagara's own website, they stated, "By accepting this proposal, Elko New Market will position itself as a leader in the bottled water manufacturing sector and secure significant opportunities for future economic growth. I believe this sums up city leadership motivation to approve this project." In their arrogance, I believe both Niagara and city leaders assumed that we would be impressed by those labels. However, I would be more concerned about being identified as a city leader who sold out our water. Niagara has identified themselves as a catalyst for long-term economic growth within the community. They will inject a hundred and twenty five million into the local community. I would ask specifically who or what is slotted to benefit from what sounds so amazingly generous on their part. While injecting this large sum of cash does sound amazing to most people, common sense dictates that Niagara will recoup this initial investment over time. They are apparently asking for subsidies which will help, help offset their initial investment into our community. The city is slotted to run twenty-four seven. They stated that they will create a whopping fifty-nine plus jobs for the local community. I'd like to know if this means that they are going to impose being a citizen of Elko New Market as part of their hiring criteria. Water is the earth's most precious resource. In fact, it's been referred to as the next oil or gold. Niagara wants to come and profit off this vital resource, one that Minnesota is known for. In fact, often the corporation pays shockingly low rates, pennies on the dollar for this vital resource. In case you haven't been paying attention, the word drought has been in the headlines. Droughts devastate crops, ecosystems, society and the environment to include plants, animals and fish. Droughts shrink food supplies and damage habitats. Why of all the industries out there would you even for one minute entertain one involving taking water for profit? And while I would love to suggest that Niagara stay in California, one look at the twenty twenty-two U.S. drought map is all I need to see. That is not an option for them considering that most of California is in the red. Search the headlines and you will see multiple headlines involving major water sources at record low levels, including Lake Mead's reservoir which supplies water and power to twenty-five million people. Also due to the low levels of water on the Colorado River, the federal government has declared what they referred to as a tier-one water shortage for the first time ever. States were told they had to come up with a plan to massively scale back their water consumption. Niagara does get some of their water from the Colorado River when the well they get from draws low. In addition, per January twenty twenty article, it appears that many recognizable water bottling companies based in California are wearing out their welcome in California. Both citizens and environmentalist concerns list, listed included, but not limited to straining aquifer reservoir reserves, improperly disposing of toxic wastewater, anti-plastic movement studies showing bottled water containing microplastics, illegal storing and transporting hazardous waste, dumping of toxic, possibly cancer-causing water into sewers. The environmental repercussions are still unknown at that time. Niagara states they are complying with all environmental regulations required by city and state. And as far as I'm concerned, that's not reassuring. It is also my understanding that Niagara will be storing plastic pellets in the proposed sixty-five silos to make plastic bottles. It seems extremely contrary to California's environment-conscious attitude and their overall war on plastic, which includes a long list of plastic items fully banned or restricted. The city of Elko New Market has developed what is referred to as a wellhead protection plan, which you can find on their website. It includes action strategies aimed at protecting our community water supply and aquifer which supplies our local streams and wells. The implementation of this plan includes educating the citizens. In fact, it goes as far as to state that citizens will take ownership in how their actions can impact the public water supply. Citizens will then support and adopt voluntary changes in land use that will help protect water drinking supplies. In summary, it is no surprise that we are being told that we must do our part, yet we are to look the other way when their very words are contrary to something they feel outweighs these words. I, along with what I assume are the majority of the people here, are stakeholders and are deed-taking ownership in the protection of our water supply to include water quality. May I suggest that you do the same? The founder of Niagara stated, "Problems are our friends on the road to success." Well, isn't that admirable? Well, I say that this problem is not Minnesota's friend and I don't believe that we should further pave their road to success.
Thank you for that. Yes, you up front, please. Approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Chris Brovold, four one zero five Shelley Lane. Kind of get a whole series of kind of technical questions here, so just this whole water treatment thing. Maybe you guys have known about this for a while, but it's kind of my first time hearing that they're even going to be here. The water that they're, are they drilling their own well onsite or they're getting their water from our, our water treatment facility?
From our system.
From our system, okay. So then as part of like the twenty forty plans, we've got the new water treatment facility, twenty forty plan. That facility is capable of handling whatever, what is the gallons per day or gallons per hour? What is it that the city currently uses?
First phase is proposed, the second phase could come, we don't know when, but we've evaluated our system, it can handle both of those.
It can handle, is that on the, is that on the Elko, it'd be nice to know what those numbers are, how many like gallons per minute, you know, per day or whatever it is that we're currently using, what the plan is for twenty forty without Niagara and then what would be with Niagara so that we could see what that difference is. And then how far beyond that would our system be able to handle the, that, is, do you know, is it the Elko New Market pressure system? Or the new, the Elko pressure system or the New Market?
It could be the, the New Market, but I don't want to get too far into answering.
Yes.
If you want to wait for, because we expect there may be more.
Yeah.
So I'll try to get maybe to get through some of the questions. So then as, as part of this, that's obviously going to create a lot of more wear and tear on our, our system. I have seen the system, it is a really impressive automated water treatment system. It's actually a great, great system to put in this, the community. Does that wear and tear included in part of the process that they're going to be paying for? That would be another question. That all of us here, we have all been in a situation where if you, if you decide to overwater your lawn, there's a, there's a tiered payment system for water. So if you choose to pay, use more water for gardening, for lawns, we pay a premium for that. The more you, the more you use, the more you pay. Is that going to be the case for them as well or do they have a special pricing structure for that? So that's something I'd be, because we have to pay premiums based on usage. I would expect that they would pay premium based on usage as well, you know, once, as they exceed certain tiers. And then again, if we get to a certain point where we get, we're at, you know, there's droughts going on, they come and go, that's fine. Is there any kind of priority set up? So if we have a limited supply of water coming through the treatment facility and we get to a low point, who has priority? Because in a bottling system that's automated, you're running twenty-four seven, you can't just stop that machinery, it has to keep going. Starting and stopping them is not the way the automation works. So if they have priority over the water, over the residents for drinking water, because you really can't tell the difference between watering lawns and drinking water at a residence, you just know that we're using the water. So I'd be wondering at that low point, what, what is that threshold and who gets priority of the water at that point? The bottling company or the residents? And it sounds like, you know, one of the questions you've already answered here is that, if there's any other, any other communities that have tried, that Niagara has tried to get into besides Eau Claire? And have you guys talked to those councils and gotten information of why they chose not to do that? Are there any other facilities, other places out there besides Eau Claire? I think it'd be good to at least communicate with those councils to find out what it is that they felt was, was not worthy in their town. If there's something different here that makes it much better, more worthy, that's fine, but it'd be kind of a good opportunity for you guys to get more information. Just from a safety standpoint, so when you're putting resin, any kind of things, are there going to be full containment for in case of a spill? Is it, is it a dry resin or like a pellet resin or a wet resin for the bottles?
Pellet.
Pellet. So is there any kind of toxicity of those pellets if they, the whole thing were to empty out on the ground? In most, most kind of silos or towers, you have to have a full containment underneath that. So if for some reason there was a rupture or whatever, that all of that is contained, so it doesn't get into the, you know, you're talking about microplastics and other things. You'd have to know that that's contained and doesn't get into the, the water system. Let's see. The other kind of, the last thing is that, you know, if, if we're pulling more from the watershed, have you contacted or been in contact with all of the other communities that are in the watershed to, to let them know how this is, if this water plant goes in? You know, we've got one aquifer that's shared in the watershed amongst what, fifteen different communities around the area? I don't know how far it reaches. But if they've all have their twenty forty plans and if there's other things going on together, are you guys aware of how that would impact all the watershed across all those communities? And then last question, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go through these quickly so I can get them. Who monitors the aquifer for level? Is that state DNR, like, I don't know, who does that? Who's, who's in charge of that and how often do they do that? Is that, you know, once a year, twice a year, weekly, daily? And how do they know when the- the aquifer is being replenished or being overused? So I would like to figure out who's in charge of that and at what level, so we can keep that. If you're going to put a bottling plant and use a lot more water out of the aquifer, I would want to increase that monitoring of the aquifer much more frequently and ensure who's in charge of that. If it's all the way up at the Minnesota DNR, they're so understaffed, the odds of you actually getting that on a very, more frequent, regular basis would be limited, I think, if you didn't have a way to monitor it locally here in town, at least at Scott County level, if not at the city level, or at least within the watershed. So I think those are my technical questions. I can repeat any of them if you, if I didn't, was it clear on any of them?
We might have to come back to you, Chris.
Yep.
So.
Later, and we start going through the questions.
All right, so they, I just.
Yeah, wrote down seven.
Yeah, I've got them written down here, so if there's a, if I need to.
Yeah, I got seven questions as well. Thank you. Yes, please come up to the podium. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Jonathan Dutton, no, sorry, Jonathan Carlson. I wish I was John Dutton. I want to share my strong, I'm at 26126 Pillsbury Avenue, property owner directly north of the proposed development. So I just want to share continuing strong objections of development being proposed involving the I-35 Industrial Park and Niagara Bottling. I've got a lot of objections, but I'm going to focus on three main areas. So one is regarding environmental impact. As you know, Niagara would consume more water than all the businesses and all the residents in Elko today. There's about 300,000 gallons pumped per day. Niagara Phase 1 Plan is for, calls for 400,000 gallons a day, and I believe that doubles if a Phase 2 Plan goes forward. So, on the city's website, you cite an unnamed hydrogeology company stating that no undue depletion of the supplying aquifer would occur. I really wonder what the underlying assumptions and data led to that conclusion. I don't know if that, you can answer that question, I'd love to see that study. In, just in June of this year, the EPA announced that a thousand-fold decrease in the safe levels of forever chemicals in, that are known to cause cancer and being found increasingly across wells in Minnesota at an alarming rate. The Sierra Club took all the available public water testing data from Minnesota, compared it to that standard, and said, already a million and a half Minnesotans have drinking water systems that exceed the EPA's new advisory health levels for these forever chemicals. I encourage everyone to Google that, and it's easy to find information on these new chemicals. The Minnesota Department of Health said, hey, it's an emerging contaminant, there's a lot we don't know. So it's a risk. Drought is a risk. Susan already talked about the Niagara plant in Eau Claire and what the citizens did there. Ironically, they had 16 wells, had plenty of water. Shortly thereafter, they had eight wells because eight were contaminated. So with all this uncertainty about drought, chemical contamination around water supply and groundwater, with all this uncertainty, why is now the right time to commit the biggest amount of groundwater in the history of Elko to one for-profit company? It doesn't make sense. My second area of objections about unduly prioritizing growth of existing, growth over existing residents and businesses. Residents will pay nearly double the rate per gallon that Niagara pays for water. Residents already face a tiered progressive rate structure, as was mentioned earlier, that the more they consume, the higher the rate they pay per gallon. Niagara will not. Residents already face enforced seasonal water restrictions used May through September that they can be charged with a misdemeanor for, for violating. Niagara will not. Yet they will consume more water than all the residents in Elko combined. Does that make sense? Whose needs are being prioritized with these policies and pricing? And lastly, I would say if the intent was to place Niagara and the new access road in the industrial park, in the place where it will have the most negative impact on the people that live in homes adjacent to that park, you'd put it exactly where it's being proposed, on the east side of the park. Is the intent here to force all of us that live on the north side of Deuce Road, across from the industrial park, into selling by making it unbearable to live here as fast as possible, all in service of this 2040 plan that the city council approved last year? When I read that plan, I wondered what having a home on land that's guided towards industrial rezoning, and I quote, would feel like. I don't wonder anymore, I know exactly what it feels like. For my family and I, this isn't business, it's not about money, it's not about jobs, it's personal. Our property and our house are directly across the street from the proposed development. Our two adult kids live with their families in the Windrose subdivision in Elko. We love Elko, we live here, we love our neighbors, our roots are here. Is this planning commission and ultimately the city council willing to sacrifice the security of our water supply, the needs of existing residents and businesses, and the quality of life for those that would be forced to live next to this plant on the altar of growth? Are 60 jobs and a couple hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue really worth all this? The proposed Niagara Bottling plant is wrong for those of us that are going to be forced to live next to it. It's wrong for the existing residents and businesses in Elko New Market, and it's wrong for all of those that depend on the area's groundwater resources. We can and should do better. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address. I appreciate everybody's long comments, but please try to stick to the main points of your, what you want to say.
Because they're all so well considered. So first, I would like to say thank you to the Niagara representative for being here tonight to tell us the same information that we can find out on the website and only that information. I would also like to point out that every single person in this room and in that room drove through a winter weather storm to be here today. I didn't realize we could just phone it in. But I think that this is the first of probably many times you will see preferential treatment to Niagara over the residents from the city council and the planning commission. So, first, I'd like to make it clear that I'm not, you know what, I was going to make it clear that I'm not against the industrial park, but after tonight, I don't think I want to make that clear anymore. I'm not against development in Elko New Market. In fact, I strongly support development. The development of responsible, self-sustaining businesses that don't seek to privatize declining public resources for individual profit, which is not Niagara Bottling. Take, for example, Los Lunos, New Mexico. In the middle of an historic drought, in the middle of the desert, the Niagara Bottling plant in Los Lunos requested to more than double their water consumption. County residents and local farmers stood up to them and they backed down. Now Niagara is coming back for a fourth time with a renewed request to double the amount of water that they take per year from the Albuquerque aquifer. For the fourth time in five years, residents of Los Lunos, New Mexico have organized protests and rallies to stop their city council from granting Niagara's requests. Local opposition to Niagara's request in Los Lamos, New Mexico is overwhelming. From the ongoing survey, 79.9% reported being very dissatisfied with Niagara Bottling's operation. 93.5 strongly oppose Niagara's request for more water. 76% are extremely worried about Niagara's current use of local water, and another 16% are very worried. Those are not the only ones who oppose Niagara's taking of community water. People in Bloomfield, Connecticut also protested the secretive water deal that Niagara negotiated with their city leaders and water authority. And just last year, in Eau Claire, they successfully protested this exact same bottling plant, exactly what we're talking right now. In fact, much of the information Elko New Market City is offering the residents on the city website is word-for-word the same information Niagara likely supplied Eau Claire City Council to offer to their residents. Obviously, this templated information, insert city name here, comes directly from the marketing department of Niagara Bottling and tells residents exactly what Niagara Bottling wants them to know. Not much. I believe the Elko New Market City Council has been less than transparent, while quickly moving towards the approval of Niagara's 425,000 plan, square-foot plastic bottling plant, that after Niagara's Phase 2, will be permitted to use 310 million gallons of Elko New Market's water per year, in perpetuity, forever. There's no end date, no end date. I, and many other residents, oppose the city council permitting Niagara to profit off of 310 million gallons per year of Elko New Market's water until there has been a comprehensive environmental impact study of how this would affect the local water supplies, including the wells, the rivers, the wetlands, and the lakes. A comprehensive study that is not done or paid for by Niagara Bottling or its subsidies or Ryan builders. Again, for those in the back, I support development of responsible, self-sustaining businesses that do not seek to privatize declining public resources for individual profit. That is not Niagara Bottling.
Do you have specific questions?
Oh, I do!
Okay, because.
So here's my questions.
We're already at five minutes right now.
Okay, great. What is the name of the?
And I really want to offer the opportunity for others to speak as well, as we're past 10 o'clock.
So in the current economy, where manufacturing facilities are struggling to fill their open positions, does the benefit of creating those 50-ish additional jobs outweigh the cost of the, to the environment and to the Elko New Market residents? Has the city already signed any contracts with Niagara, including non-disclosures? Can we see them now that the non-disclosure time has passed?
Okay.
Will the city be signing a contract to provide water to Niagara? If so, what are the terms of the contract? How many years? Because I was told it's indefinitely.
Okay, so you want to know.
Is there a provision for inflation, change of water flow, or value? Can we, the people, the citizens, see the contract before the public meetings?
Yes, so I'm hearing you want to.
So that we have time, no, no, I'm not done. So we have time to digest what and who's right.
But I also want to remind you, we're all past six minutes, and I do want to allow others to speak as well.
I know, honey, but you know what?
So I want to, I want to make sure.
I'm asking questions. They're going to ask the same questions. Why does it matter who's asking them?
Well, and I'm hearing repetitive questions of the same thing. So I'm wondering if.
With the potential inability.
If we could have some of our representatives answer these questions for you, so they're not so repetitive.
With the, here's one that you haven't heard before. Would the potential inability of Elko New Market to provide the volume of water sought by Niagara that they've contracted for leave them in jeopardy? Elko New Market in jeopardy of a lawsuit?
Okay.
If you can, if they're, if that's unable to provide it? I mean, it's a contract, right?
Okay, so.
Will residents, we can, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not done. Will residents continue to be asked to conserve water by taking shorter showers and not watering their lawns while Niagara profits from drawing 310 million gallons of Elko New Market's water per year, forever? Since they are using the same water, although much more of it, will Niagara Company be charged the same rate, the ridiculous rate that you charge us residents? Would the water that Niagara actually puts in the plastic bottles to sell and would be making a significant profit on be sold to them at a higher commodity rate that more accurately reflects the value of water in that form? Who will be eating the $3,084,745 in connection fees not paid? The city of Elko New Market, or is that Scott County, Minnesota? According to the city, Niagara is requesting the reduction in sewer availability charge and water availability charge connection fees in the amount not to exceed $3,084,745 for Niagara Bottling to assist with the project. This is connection fee assistance, and this isn't even accounting the assistance because of all the jobs that they're going to create. So who, who eats that money, those connection fees?
So I have connection fees down, I have contract information down, I have the similar questions that you and this other gentleman had. Do you have any other questions that have not been asked yet?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. I do appreciate your comments and your time. I'm wondering if we turn it over to some other.
Oh, I do have one more question.
Representatives.
Are you guys going to actually consider what we're saying here tonight?
So, right.
Just going to go ahead and do what you were going to do anyways?
So I want to clarify, this public hearing is for the conditional use permit.
So it doesn't matter. That's what you're telling me.
Can you let me finish, please? So it's in regards to the, the conditional use permit regarding the height of the silos, regarding the 50.
So we're already like way beyond the public.
So we have, this is what we're talking about today, this is the public hearing. And December 15th, that's when the city, this goes to the city council, you can all, you're more than encouraged to show up.
But then they're already going to have made up their minds too, right?
Your comments are heard tonight.
So when do we get comments that you're actually going to consider or answer?
So, we are only here tonight to talk about the public hearing regarding the conditional use.
When can you get me answers to my questions?
As soon as you're finished.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really? You're going to answer these right now?
Yep.
We're going to answer as many.
Once everybody else has had an opportunity to.
Yes.
As many as you can, we will answer tonight.
Yes.
Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Tim Zwaiber, 25420 Natchez Avenue. Thanks, commissioners, for taking the time. It's getting pretty late. But I have a couple of questions, again, not about the silo, apologize, I understand. But, got to get them asked sometime. Well owners, a lot of private wells around here, and I don't feel like there's been a very adequate study done on how this much water usage would be affecting well owners, because I was told that it wouldn't be a problem when the city grew and I had to drop my well another stick. So I'm a little bit leery about whether that's actually true. I'm hoping that you have some answers as a representative of LRE Water, Dave. Not met you before, but I assume you can get me some answers on this stuff. Another question is how the city can limit, why, everybody's asked this, but how can the city limit water if we find that we are depleting the aquifer faster than it's replenishing in our corner of the Jordan Aquifer? Because we are kind of the end of it. Another thing is the storage silos for water, I'm guessing they're like 450,000 gallons of water. Same question as the resins, what happens if somebody forgets a valve? And then, the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is byproducts from filtering water. I know that when we filter contaminants out of water that we don't want into bottled water or in our water, we end up with lots of calcium, magnesium, iron, all these things. And there's also a lot of heavy metals, and some, I believe radon from our water is in those as well. Radioactive elements like radon that we have to do lots of mitigation in basements for in this area, it's also in the water, if I remember right. So I'm curious what they are planning to do with those byproducts from filtering water if this should go through. So that's my questions. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your questions.
Oh, sure. At least it didn't ring, right?
Okay. Other comments? Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Larry Schofield, 11550 Deuce Road. You can tell from the address, I am right directly across from this Lot 1. Are you able to put up the map, please, for the entire development? So everybody knows what I'm talking about. I've got a little map here, but that's not going to do. While she's doing that, I will show you, this is an earlier proposal where the access road to County Road 2 was over to the west or in the center of the development. The details of this have been very sketchy and held close to the vest. Where is the access road proposed right now for this Lot 1, or for this east lot? If it's at the, if it's at the east, right where my house is, the trucks, the cars, everything coming out that driveway is aimed right at the windows of my house. And all of these residences down there are going to be putting up with. And all of these residences down there are going to be putting up with stopping and starting trucks, taking out from there, leaving from there. This, this hasn't been really pointed out, what, where's the access point for County Road 2? There should only be one. Scott County has always said they want to limit the number of accesses to that road. And we've already got several people back here, I'm talking about here, I live right here. So why are they actually going to put another access down at the east end for this business? For this bottling company?
Just a temporary one. And it's, temporaries needed, so Ryan Companies will build the road into the industrial park. And while they're building the road-
Right across from my, yeah, and they're going in and out during this construction? Why are they not building the road where it was proposed to begin with and be done with it? Right there in the middle. That'll, that'll cover the whole development, and that's where it should be.
That is basically where it's going to be.
Okay, but for how long are they going to be?
It's a temporary construction access.
Temporary, what is temporary?
For the duration of the construction of the building.
Until the, until the road in the park is constructed and it's passable for them.
So a month? Two months? A year? Two years? Nobody knows, do you?
Probably the majority of a construction season.
Yeah.
Okay.
More than two months.
So everybody understands what I'm talking about, right? I mean, you can see what I'm talking about? Or do you have questions?
We may be able to bring up a map when we get into answering.
All right, I wish you would bring up that map.
I, well, I can bring it up.
Larry, we'll bring it up. This is, so the question you have is, where is the permanent access? Why was it chosen to be there? And why the temporary access in that location and how long? So as we start going down the list of questions, we'll get to that and my club resources.
And one final question?
Yep.
Why in the heck are you putting industrial instead of by Interstate 35? They're going to start way down where the residences are? That's the last place that should be developed for industrial. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your comments.
Um, I guess the recording stopped. I just got a message from someone that said, ask why the recording stopped for the meeting.
Maybe time limit.
The, the meeting had a default-
I'm guessing time limit.
We're recording separately on the system. That was something within Zoom, so.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, that was actually about two hours ago, so.
I, I just saw it.
Thank you. Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Kristi Thompson. I live at 25831 Pillsbury Avenue. And that was my dad that just spoke. And so I was just wondering also, I think some of the information had shown that the, I'm not sure, is it the silos or is it the building would need to be 30 feet from a local road and 50 feet from an arterial road?
That's correct, that's correct.
Which one? Is it the building or the silos?
Both.
Okay. Okay, so then can you tell me, so County Road 2, is that a local road or is that an arterial?
Arterial.
Okay, so then they would be 50 feet from County Road 2.
At least.
At least.
At least, okay. Anyone here, a resident adjacent to this project? Okay.
Would you like it by your business?
Yes, exactly. Is there going to be a, someone had said a stoplight? Is that going to be at this temporary place across from my parents' house? We have a hard time getting out of their driveway the way it is.
It was a, a street light at the new intersection where the new road will be constructed off of County Road 2.
Over by Dupont?
Yeah.
Or GNT, is it Dupont or is it GNT?
Dupont.
Dupont.
It's over by Dupont, so that's where the more of a, a street light would be?
It'd be a light, but not a stop and go light.
Just a street light.
I'm, I'm sorry, what do you mean by a street light?
Just lighting the intersection.
Yeah, just illuminating the area. Just-
An intersection.
Oh, so not like a red, yellow, green?
Right.
Okay. Okay, just a light.
To illuminate that area.
Just, okay, for safety.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Adams, 9055 Glenborough Drive. Couple of, couple of questions and couple of comments. How many on the council actually live in Elko New Market?
All of them live in Elko New Market's required because they have to be residents to be on the council.
Do any of you live in the area that this is going to take place, that it would affect you? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be combative, I'm just asking the question. Okay. Where, if the construction does go through, or even just for this industrial park in the future, where will the lots be to store all the construction equipment for the six months to a year, whatever that it takes to build? Is that something that's determined later by the developer?
It can only be on the site itself unless they would lease property or have an agreement with some neighbor, but there's no one else.
Somewhere within the area.
It's got to be on the site they're building it.
Well, okay. Well, because I mean, if you're, if, let's say that that industrial park gets built up or even just starting it and they can't store that equipment on another outlot close to that, and that takes up the majority of their property between parking and the building itself, where would-
Even the other outlot would not be their property. They're buying this lot, they have to contain their operations to that lot.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So if they have a building and a parking lot, that's probably going to maximize their space because they bought that space, they're going to maximize that space. Where does all that huge-
They built it on that lot and the equipment's on that lot and-
Not always.
Well, we're familiar, but it's not on somebody else's property.
Okay. I just, I was going to ask the question, but I just found the information. So the size comparison of this particular building is about 60% or 65% of the size of the Amazon Building in Lakeville. Because the Amazon Building is 750,000 square feet, this is 400 and-
25.
25,000? Okay. And then in your presentation, you said that the fire department said they can reach the height of that building? But just because they can reach the height, is there enough fire engines and staff to contain a fire in a 425,000 square foot building?
In the case of any community with a large industrial, if they had a major incident, they would be calling mutual aid.
Yeah, I mean, like Lakeville and whatever, but-
Building will be, yeah, be sprinkled in mutually aid.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the 60-plus feet silos, do they affect any of the surrounding air parks like the Lakeville, Farbo, and Webster?
60 feet.
I honestly don't know if that's something-
It is well below what you-
It's like a six-foot building, but we don't have six-foot buildings around here.
No more so than the transmission towers that already run through the site.
Which are already-
Okay.
That's tall, yeah.
Okay. And then my last thing is, I'll just make a statement, and my statement is just because you can, doesn't mean that you should by any means.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Jason Sherman, 1314 Overlook Street. So I know it was brought up earlier, but I want to bring up the question on the aquifer. Many communities in the area share the aquifer. We need to know what kind of environmental impact and justification has been done to ensure that we're not impacting communities in the area. Because we shouldn't just say that we're going to do this and then three, four years down the road, with all the problems that Elko New Market has had, go ahead and, you know, say, oops, too late. Because whoever's lived here long enough, you know, over 15 years had known, has known that the city had a fair share of major problems. It prompted the rebuild of a major water plant. It was brought online, all these residents are paying massive water bills, restricting water usage to contain that bill. Not only that, but being told in summer months that we can't water our lawns on every day, but yet Niagara's going to just tax the system as much as they want. So we need that environmental study done. It needs to be done accurately in the correct way on how it's going to impact everybody in the area, not just Elko New Market, but everybody that belongs on aquifer, including the wells.
Before it's done.
Before it's done, yeah. Right. So my next question is, is there a plan for, for the pollution that this is going to produce? I mean, every piece of industrial produces some sort of pollution. What, it was mentioned about the filtered water, the heavy metals that are going to be in it, all the other unmentionable elements that are going to come out of that water? Where's that going to go? How's it going to be contained? What are the mitigation plans if there's an environmental disaster? What's going to happen with the, you know, the plastic that's being manufactured there? Because they're manufacturing these plastic bottles on site. What, is that going to affect our air quality? How's that going to look? These are major questions that need to be addressed before this should be proposed or even approved, excuse me. The drought, I mean, I know that roads, word's thrown around a lot, but when you look at the maps, we are in a serious drought area. And again, we should be considering those things when we're looking at the approval of these. And then finally, do we know yet if there's a limit to the amount of water they're going to tax off the city connection? Has that been discussed? Because what I'm hearing is it's just unlimited, they're not, they're not going to have a cap on it. And as we know from automation, we can't just shut it off when we get, when we go too far. And then, again, have you communicated to other city councils that have worked with Niagara to figure out why that didn't work out in those communities and what they learned from those experiences? Because I think it'd be a great benefit to this city, the city council, the planning commission, everyone, if we learned about that and what went wrong or what went well with those, so we can make educated decisions for our own community here, so. And again, I thank you for your time, I realize it's late, and I appreciate you hearing us out tonight, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, gentleman in front, please. State your name and address for the record.
Yeah, sure. Nicholas Feifield, 23041 Woodland Ridge, Elko, or New Market Township. There is a process the public can take to petition for an EAW, and we have been in communication with the EKB, or the EQB in order to petition for that environmental assessment. I would urge anybody who has information they would like to provide for that to contact me before leaving here. What I would like to note is, is this our only opportunity to oppose this project tonight?
No, as we discussed the process earlier.
And then on December 15th as well, correct? And then that is it?
If the council makes a decision that night, yes.
Okay, so, building permits, all of that?
Yep, the building permits are an administrative process. It's simply you have to follow building code, local ordinances, et cetera.
That's not a public hearing.
It's not a challengeable item, that's purely an administrative process.
Okay.
You check the boxes, you get your building permit.
I would urge that you not vote to close this hearing and that you would have it continued so we can further look into especially the environmental concerns that other communities have seen and then decided to go away from Niagara.
Thank you for your comments. Yes. You, you, sorry, I don't know your names. Please state your name and address for the record.
It keeps moving on me, sorry. Oh, shoot. Well, maybe I can't do it. Sorry. Can someone else go?
Janelle Kujna, 26775 Grand Avenue, Elko, Minnesota. And I would just second Nicholas, is that right? Nicholas's comments. You guys have an opportunity to make a difference, to listen to the people that live in this community, table this issue, get further community input. You have the power to table this conditional use permit tonight and get more input from the community and have real environmental impact studies done. You have the ability to do this. And I'm pushing on your conscience tonight to do that. Not just pass this, I know it's late, I know you, we've all had a lot of comments, but this city, the people that live here, I don't know this for 100%, but if you have a community meeting about this, we don't want this. We do not want this, and you guys have the power to stop it. So please, please vote to table this tonight. We are not ready for this. You guys are maybe ready for it, you guys over here are maybe ready for it, Ryan is back over here, ready for it. We live here, we're not ready. We're not, we don't have our questions answered. We don't have the environmental studies that need to be done. And across the nation, there is lawsuits in cities that are shutting down these bottling companies because they are killing their aquifers. So we're going to be progressive and allow them in here? And then what? And then how are we going to get them out? So please, we're not ready. This is too fast. It's been way too fast. It's been pushed through, I don't know what in, who in this room knew about it, when you knew about it, what you've known about it, but I can tell you as a citizen for the last 25 years of this city, I didn't know about it. And I don't think it's fair. This is our town. It's not just you five and the five people that sit on the council and what Ryan wants and what Niagara wants. It's all the other people that live here. And this is going to have an impact for generations and generations and generations. So what's the hurry? Let's get a real environmental impact study. Table this issue tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Pexa, and I'm from New Prague, Minnesota. And I'm here today because there is no such thing as an Elko New Market aquifer. The aquifer serves so many, and it has an impact for so many of us. I urge you to vote no or to table all further decisions or recommendations related to this Niagara water bottling plant proposal. I believe it is short-sighted and has the potential for serious long-term negative impacts. It is not worth the risk. Instead, this is a time we should be protecting our groundwater. Recently, nearby Dakota County did just that. In 2019, a company in Lakeville proposed shipping hundreds of millions of gallons of bulk water each year by train to western states. However, that proposal was soundly rejected by Dakota County. And because of the concern that the proposal raised, Dakota County put out in place a one-year moratorium that prohibited the construction of new high-volume wells to give officials the time to strengthen their protection, their groundwater protection laws, and they did just that. Today, the proposal before you is from California-based Niagara Bottling. And in practical terms, it isn't very different from that Lakeville bulk water proposal that was soundly rejected. Instead of drilling new wells, it seems Niagara has found the loopholes. They're going to look for a willing community partner that they can tap into existing utility wells. They have plans to ship out hundreds of millions of gallons each water, each year, up to 310 million gallons to be exact. Plus, this sweet deal would give Niagara access to that water at a cheap bulk rate for as long as they'd like to do business in town. And they potentially have priority access to the water. In essence, this is the bulk exportation of water, but just in little plastic bottles. I urge you to reject Niagara's proposal just like Dakota County rejected bulk groundwater exportations and just like others have said, Eau Claire, Wisconsin did as well. I've heard responses by Elko New Market leadership about sustainability of the aquifer. They've said environmental work has been done and we're assured that the additional resources, usage won't deplete or jeopardize our water resources. But as I understand it, in considering this development, Elko New Market has not engaged in specific aquifer modeling that takes into account the long-term uncertainty of climate change in this region. Given that there isn't a specific timeframe for Niagara's access to our groundwater, they can withdraw in perpetuity. Regardless of the state of the aquifer, I think leaders are asking the wrong question. It isn't if we can sustain that level of groundwater withdrawal, the much more important question is should we withdraw that level of groundwater for this particular use? It doesn't matter if the aquifer could support 100 Niagras. This is not how we want to use our water resources. This proposal represents an outdated and unsustainable business model. One final point, I don't understand what Elko New Market is getting out of this. To me, the numbers don't add up. There may be some jobs, but no guarantee that they're going to go to Elko New Market. There will be additional utility funds, but they're only going to support the utility itself. So the only real general fund of revenue is created by the project is the 175,000 in annual property tax from Niagara, which is on their FAQ. However, Elko New Market is also considering a $3 million subsidy to Niagara. If that subsidy is approved, the meager property tax revenue would evaporate for 17 years as an offset to that subsidy. Where is the benefit to Elko New Market? I urge you to vote no to table tonight and all other questions related to Niagara. Our groundwater is too precious- Our groundwater is too precious to allow this sort of outsider development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I just have one question.
Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Susan McPhee, I live in Lakeville. I'm just curious if any of the other communities that are attached to this aquifer have been contacted about this proposal? And if not, why? Since it will affect them as well.
Thank you for your question. Yes. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
So Jamie Carlson, again, at 26126 Pillsbury Avenue. I did a little bit of homework because I looked on your website and all your pictures, and I saw that a lot of you gals are super young gals. Nothing wrong with that. Bravo. However, sometimes you can learn a little something from somebody a little bit older that's been there, done that. So what I did was I called the BBB. I don't know if you know what the BBB is, but it's called the Better Business Bureau. So I talked to several of them. As a matter of fact, Morneville, North Carolina, Ontario, California, and Irvin, California, are not willing to accredit, any accreditations towards Niagara Bottling. Nothing. And so then I went further to ask more questions that, didn't you used to do it on a starbase like when I was a child? And they said, yes, we used to do it just like a hotel, zero to a five. All three places gave Niagara Bottling Company a zero. And they all had backflow from environmental hazards. So then I contacted a well man way up north by Black Duck, Minnesota. He's worked 31 years on wells. And he said, even if they tap into the city, there will be some type of runoff that we least expect. I mean, I lived through the 70s. We didn't know we had asbestos in the ceilings. So what they were trying to share with me is there will be runoff, there will be contaminants. It will get into your well water. When it gets into people's well waters, the sad thing is, that's when it becomes about money because people start lawsuits. They attorney up, and they go after the Niagara company, and they go after the committee that passed it. So just a little bit of wisdom, call the Better Business Bureau and see what they think about the Niagara Bottling Company. It's not a positive. But thank you for all your time tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments related to this hearing? I'm not sure if there's anyone.
Jake, if you're in the back room, can you see if there's anybody else back there that has any comments? Madam Chair, if there's no other comments, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing. There was a large list of questions.
Yes.
Some of which can be grouped.
Right.
And I would have a suggestion on maybe how to start taking bites out of the elephant and working through the number of those.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And if those answers lead to follow-up questions?
I mean, it's up to the chair, yes and no. I mean, we could be here all night if everybody keeps asking questions. We will, we will try.
One meeting to go over this.
Ma'am, ma'am, we will try and answer the questions that we can tonight. We did bring a lot of extra resources into the room tonight to answer a lot of questions that are not directly related to the applications that are being asked because we know that there's public interest.
Thank you.
So we will try and answer things as thoroughly as we can this evening. We cannot promise that we can answer every question or every question to the level of detail that you might desire, but that's why there will be, there can be follow-up, and you may need to interact with staff or other experts that we have outside of this meeting.
One, one second. I just want to see, is there?
I don't think we had any additional comments in that room. They were saying they were having trouble hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Just wanted to ask.
Please.
Next meeting, December 15th. Is this the largest venue we can find so people can all come and be in the same room?
We can potentially explore other venue options that will require reposting the meeting. So again, I would refer you back to the sources of information that we have already provided to provide information related to meeting dates, times, and locations. At this point, well, it's damned if you do, damned if you don't. We will provide some additional seating in the hallway. As you can see, we have monitors in the hallway. We can provide for an additional substantial seating. If we move it, people will complain that we moved it. And if, because they were notified it was here, if we don't move it, people will complain that maybe there was inadequacies of the facility. We will try to our best ability to accommodate it here. If it's determined that we need to make a change, we will do our best to notify it. Again, please look at our city publications, notices for public meetings. Please follow us on Facebook and the city's website on the FAQ related to this particular project.
Putting people in the back room is ridiculous.
Yeah. We should all be in one spot.
One thing I will point out is that meeting will be virtual, and the public will be able to participate virtually. Haven't put out the Facebook post.
So you don't have to face them face-to-face then?
No, we're trying to make, well, no, we're making it convenient. So if people don't want to drive down, they can participate in the meeting and provide testimony remotely. It's a plan the council's been working on for a couple of years. The technology is now in place to do it. We were going to do a soft opening on it at our next council meeting and start promoting it.
I think you already did with the Niagara rep.
Yeah, yes, we did. And it provided, and wasn't it great? We were able to bring them here to be able to respond to questions that you had remotely. That's exactly why we did it.
And they got a lot longer than two minutes.
It was a sales commercial.
So.
It was like 10 minutes.
So we will be, you will be able to participate remotely at that meeting, and we will provide information on how to get the link to participate via Zoom.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Yes, I have a couple people in the back here who want to comment, so please step up to, yes.
There was a question, sorry.
Yes.
Jake Skazajek, planner. There was a question in the other room. If the questions asked tonight are going to be posted on the city website, if we can do that.
You can request and it'll be posted.
So what we will do is the testimony from tonight will be included in the information packet that will go to the council for the 15th. This is the public hearing. It is intended to collect the information, and that information will be transmitted to the best of our ability. And we all know, we've been here for several hours. There's a lot of testimony that will need to be converted, but it will be included in that packet that goes to the city council. That's how that information will be provided. And you can find that packet on the city's website. That packet will be available for download immediately after it's provided to the council. So you'll get the information at the same time the council does.
Yes, so I had a couple people, I don't, either one of you, yeah, sorry. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Tammy Chamberlain, 24126 Beard Avenue. I just, I'm a little confused. I would like some clarification on, we're talking about a conditional use permit for the height of these silos?
Yes.
Is everything else been passed? And now we need to determine if they can put these silos in, or I'm?
It's like hard to sort of words, right?
No, so the process is before anything can happen, you have to subdivide the property. That is the plat, was the first item on the agenda. You have to zone the property before you can plat it, so you know the guidelines you have for plating the property. So that is the first thing you do before the development of the property. With regards to the specific site of the development, okay? They need special approvals through the conditional use permit for the height of the silos. All of these other discussions are policy issues, which are not necessarily directly related to these land use applications. Those are policy questions that the council will be taking comment on the 15th before they make any final decisions regarding any of this. And it's all been scheduled intentionally that nothing is approved, and it will be handled as a single package.
Okay.
So the council knows that there are individuals, we're expected to come tonight to ask a number of questions and provide feedback. And so we were prepared to answer that. And then they know that there may be people who want to come again or did not have the opportunity to come tonight. And they will also be accepting comment at the council meeting. Now, at the council meeting, the specific public hearings that they're going to be having are related to the business subsidies. That's a more expansive policy question because the policy question is, do you want to incentivize that business to come to your community? So a lot of the questions that have been raised fall under that umbrella, maybe a little bit better than they do related to the height of silos.
Yes.
But people might not have been able to come on the 15th, so we're taking comment. We have a philosophy of community engagement, so we're trying to provide as many opportunities through the process. We're taking comment, even if it's not directly related, so we can get questions, answer questions here and at the council meeting on the 15th.
Okay. One more thing, because it was hard to hear over there. Did you guys all agree that you're sending the, that you approve the proposal for the land zoning change? You're recommending that that?
Yes, we made the recommendation to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Stephanie Adams, 9055 Glen Road Drive. I just have a question. So this was on the table in the other room. So it's one copy, it's got everything, I think, that you went through, and where are these available?
On the city's website.
The entire, all of these documents, every single one of these documents is on there? Okay. And then?
It was posted on Friday, last Friday.
And I do, I, I know that somebody asked this question, but you didn't answer it, and I was just hoping that you could answer that right now. So the other communities that the aquifer or are affected by the aquifer, have they been notified? I mean, I've just.
We have that question on the list.
We've had that question about five times.
Right, but you don't, you can't answer that now, tonight?
We haven't been able to have the opportunity to answer questions, the, the long list of questions. So we just want to take that time. I just want to make sure I've gathered all the questions, or that we've gathered all the questions, so then we can start answering some of them for you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at 10:43 PM.
So, Madam Chair, there's a lot of pieces to this.
Yes.
And as we work through this, we do request the patience from the audience because there was a long string of questions and lots of variations on questions. So we'll try and provide some larger umbrella answers, which try and catch as many questions as we can. But when we get to the end, if there's a specific question that hasn't been answered, we will ask, ask, okay, was there anything we forgot or didn't catch? So please bear with us as we work through it. I think the first thing we should talk about is just the water question, and there's a number of aspects to it. There's questions related to the aquifer, the capacity of the aquifer to supply it. Who is in charge of managing or making determinations about the capacity of the aquifer? How is it monitored? Who do you have to go through? Is there, is it just a local decision, or is there somebody at a higher level that's involved in that process? What is the impact on wells, how to offer? So there's a lot of questions on that. So I would suggest we start there and ask Dave Hume, who's with LRE Water, which is our consulting hydrogeologist, and Seth Peterson, who is the head of the Environmental Division, which is water and sewer for laypeople at the Burnsville-Bolton-Mink office, to start tackling, give us an overview and start tackling those questions that came up. And I'm assuming you guys are writing them down so you could touch on them.
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much. It's a late evening and a lot of excellent questions. I, I think we'll try to summarize these as best we can. I'm Dave Hume with LRE Water. I'm a hydrogeologist. I've worked in the Twin Cities for 20 to 30 years on groundwater resources, groundwater supply, not just in the Twin Cities, but in the Upper Midwest, in glacial aquifers, sands and gravels. The Praetashane-Jordan Aquifer, which we're going to talk about here and give you a little more detail on that. And work a lot with Bolton and May, Seth Peterson here as well. So we're going to kind of tag team on a few of the questions. Okay? So I guess, you know, we have a couple slides, I think, that might illustrate some, some conceptual things, again, kind of high level, but kind of give an overview that might answer a lot of these. And then if you have more specific questions after that, we can, we can kind of address those, if you'd like to approach it that way.
Yes, that sounds good. Thank you.
And we'd ask, as we're going through this, that the audience just isn't randomly throwing any questions. We'll try and answer them. And once we've completed an area of discussion, we'll ask if there's any more questions in that area. Otherwise, we might be here till 2 o'clock in the morning, so.
Sure, okay. Okay, so first thing we want to talk about is the, the extent of the, the Jordan Aquifer, okay? And, and that is the, the target aquifer where the water source is proposed. And it, it's a prolific aquifer. It's made up of three primary formations. The St. Peter Sandstone, the Praetashane group, which is kind of a fractured limestone, transmits a lot of water, and then the Jordan Sandstone. So those three formations kind of make up what is referred to as kind of the Jordan Aquifer in general, okay? The image you see there in pink kind of represents the extent of that aquifer across the Upper Midwest. And you can see Elko New Market by the red arrow there is kind of, you know, on the edge of the Jordan Aquifer. That white area that is to the west and kind of north, north and northeast of that kind of represents the Mount Simon, which is also somewhat related to the, the Jordan Aquifer as far as its, its composition being a sandstone. But it is separated hydraulically from the Jordan. It does provide some leakage vertically, so some recharge comes from the Mount Simon occasionally. And I, I would like to make clarification. I believe the Dakota, or Dakota County that was, denied the permit for the water use out of the county was from the Mount Simon and not the Jordan. And the Mount Simon is off limits, according to DNR statutes, for further production. So I believe that was the reason why that denial occurred. One of the reasons.
And, and Dave, just, this is Seth Peterson, Bolton and May. So the pink shows the aquifer here. What you're not seeing is this aquifer continues down into Missouri. It's, it's bounded by the Missouri River on the south, so about half of Missouri. And then it follows into Illinois and comes up into the Chicago area, same thing. So the, it borders the northern part of Illinois also. So it's a very significant, large body of, or aquifer that we're talking about.
Yep, thanks, Seth.
Is there a way to quantify that in gallons, as opposed to saying significant?
Lake Superior?
It's, it's a lot of water. It's, it's 200 feet or more thick in areas filled with water, and it's not just that. It goes even above that.
Compared to 310 million gallons, is this like 2 billion?
Well, I'll take a look at, at this slide right here. This shows just, this is the amount of water pumped from the Jordan Aquifer here in Minnesota. So the total is 91 billion gallons in Minnesota. We're looking at here, the, the appropriation that we're looking for would be 365 million, so 0.4% out of that, 91 billion. So a very small percentage is what's being looked at for the water appropriation permit here for City of Elko New Market. And that's just Minnesota. This is not looking at other areas.
Yeah, it's just in the state. So just conceptually here to give you a better idea of kind of what the Jordan Aquifer looks like in this area, okay? This would kind of represent the, the hydrogeologic system, okay? So the Jordan Aquifer is confined, okay, which may represent this system right here. And it is recharged typically by precipitation, okay, which occurs, you know, over this entire area. That infiltrates, fills up the aquifer, okay? You also get recharge from overlying aquifers that may infiltrate vertically, and also from groundwater that comes up vertically from the bottom. Okay, you want to talk?
I can do this one. So there's a lot of questions on who takes care of this aquifer. So it's all governed by the Department of Natural Resources here in the state of Minnesota. They handle all the permitting, and so that's where the city gets their water appropriation permit from, the Department of Natural Resources. And they are watching all of this. There is a bunch of comments on water levels. There are water levels being monitored essentially, essentially all the time with data loggers in wells. And so I, they, Elko New Market has those in, in the wells here, and that's being monitored all over and, and being watched all the time by the DNR. So they're taking a look at all that. So as I mentioned, water appropriation permits for all communities and for, are, are completed by the Department of Natural Resources. I think it's also, I didn't put this in here, but it is also not just for public water supplies is what Elko New Market would be considered as a public public water supply, but anybody that pumps more than ten thousand gallons per day or a million gallons in a year. So that would be large irrigation wells for farmers or those types of agricultural uses. Those are also being taken care of, or those appropriation permits are also being done by the D N R. So they're looking at those larger agricultural uses as well as all public water supplies. They also require wellhead protection plans, so those have to be completed every ten years, so that looks specifically at each well. There are zones of influence, all those types of things. So every ten years, every community is doing that, or when you add a new well, you have to update your wellhead protection plans. There's also a water supply plan that's required every ten years of all public water supplies. Elko New Market just completed theirs several years ago, as did everyone else in the state of Minnesota. And so those are all done. All that is, all that information is comprised and viewed and made sure that this resource, the Jordan Aquifer being one of the resources we have for water here in the state of Minnesota, that they're protecting that, and so that it's a viable resource for not only today, but well into the future also. One other item here, Met Council, because we are in the metro area, the Met Council also is a water planning arm, and so they are also looking at this on just the metro area wide also. And so there are lots of different agencies looking at this. The D N R is the primary agency overviewing and reviewing everything with the aquifer.
Yeah, and just to add, you know, I think the question of notification of other municipalities, which may be a well interference question, you know, the D N R will look at that as part of the permitting process as well.
Yeah, if we want to run, I, for, there's some allocation questions here of how does that work? It's laid out in the city's water supply plan. So allocation, it goes for residential. That is the number one requirement. So if there's ever any type of issues with water supply, residential will get the first allocation. Second allocation priority goes to commercial, institutional, industrial, and then non-essential, car washes, things like that, that would be the third. So the number one priority is always residential. That's laid out in the city's water supply plan. The city has ordinances in there for emergency restrictions, so they can take care of that, and they can also always add on to that. And the city is evaluating, looking at adding any additional ordinance language also.
Okay, I think we'll jump to this one. This is kind of a local cross-section, hydrogeologic cross-section, that came from the Minnesota Department of Health as part of the city's wellhead protection plan. And what we want to look at is section B B prime. So this would be a slice essentially running northwest, southeast, kind of through the city wells and within the drinking water supply management area. So this will kind of give you an idea of what the, what the hydrogeology looks like, how vulnerable the aquifer might be to surface contamination, and the general, you know, water levels relative to the aquifer itself. So I mentioned the, you know, the three formations, the Saint Pete, the Parade de Chene, and also the Jordan. The Parade de Chene and the Jordan, again, they make up probably ninety-five percent of that aquifer in this area, and those are shown kind of in the blue area with the two, the three city wells, and then the underlying yellow, okay? So those, again, they're connected hydraulically. They behave as one aquifer. And I mentioned earlier, it's confined. What that means, it's under pressure. So if it's under pressure, when you put a well in, it's not just where the top of the aquifer is, it's where the water level rises, okay, above that top of the aquifer, which represents those horizontal lines with the blue triangles, okay? And when D N R looks at this as far as a permit, they want to know where that water level is when you're pumping relative to that top of the aquifer, and they have regulatory thresholds that they establish, okay, as part of the permit. And that goes for every municipality, every high-capacity water user that will tap into, not just the Jordan, but any aquifer within the state. That's part of their, part of their regulations and guidelines, okay? So two hundred and twenty feet of thickness of the aquifer itself within the city and just in the surrounding areas, and then that water level rises a hundred and forty feet above that, okay? And that's a lot of pressure, okay? A lot of pressure head that rises above that, okay? It's a very good confined aquifer, has a lot of storage capacity. And when you pump that, okay, the water level will draw down, okay, but then it's recharged, okay, by precipitation. If the wells are off and on, it'll fill back up. And there's evidence based on some of the previous tests that show very good recovery responses after pumping has shut down. Okay, now let's look at, kind of address the recharge question here, related to drought. And very good questions. Obviously, we've been in a drought for the last year and a half or so, and we're not sure what, you know, this winter is going to look like and the spring. So trying to predict what, what happens ahead can be difficult, but we can look back and say, well, historically, how has this aquifer responded to previous drought conditions? So the D N R has two observation wells shown northwest of the city and southeast, and they're shown on the map there relative to the city. And the chart on the upper left, okay, shows the water level in that observation well, completed in the Jordan Aquifer, fluctuating over the last forty years, okay? That's water level data from the last forty years. And basically, you can see that it has not fluctuated more than about ten feet, okay, in the last forty years, and that takes in a consideration, additional pumping that's, you know, occurred with growth in the metro area as well as other drought conditions. And the green line represents precipitation, okay, yearly precipitation data. And you can see that varies anywhere from twenty to forty, forty-five inches a year. But you'll see, you'll get low areas here where it drops to twenty, and then you'll see a slight decline in water levels in that well, and then it rebounds, okay? And it will continue that cycle. And this would represent, you know, the last year, year and a half, two years, you see that decline again, which would be similar to previous drought years, and water levels have actually been increasing in that observation well, okay, slightly. So bottom line is, we're not seeing a decreasing trend. If there is a drought, it's kind of a short-lived situation, and then it bounces back up because of continued recharge. The one to the southeast, that's just to show, you know, similar situations, and that observation well, again, on the Jordan. So, you know, as far as the recharge component goes and the drought, you know, when you look at historical data, you can see this aquifer responds very well to precipitation. Recharge, it is influenced by drought, but it responds back to normal levels pretty quick.
And I think what it also shows is that the D N R has been watching this aquifer. Dave mentioned it when he said, you know, think back, that, that, that very far left on the bottom axis there is nineteen seventy-nine. So we're forty-three years into this. The D N R has been managing this. There's been a significant increase in the amount of water being pumped from this aquifer, and yet we're seeing a slightly increasing trend if you threw a data line through that upwards. So doing a good job, the D N R is of managing this resource.
Just, there were some questions. Climate change came up here and there.
Sure.
And so I'm not a hydrogeologist, but I do a lot of work with stormwater. And there's no doubt in my mind, and the climate record shows it in this area, average annual rainfalls, average, so some years or less, are going up, not down. And that corresponds to that graph. So the climate change projections would be for actually increased recharge, not decreased.
Yeah. One other thing I just, I want to mention on this cross-section that I mentioned the wellhead protection plan. One component of that is called a vulnerability assessment, okay? And the Department of Health has guidance on that. And the way that's completed is you look at, you know, over the top of the aquifer, what is that material? Is it clay and silt, okay, which is very low permeability, the infiltration rate, you know, is relatively slow compared to sands. So they look at that as one component. There's also some chemical analyses they look at, that they fingerprint young water in the aquifer. They've completed that as well, and they consider this aquifer to be very low vulnerability, okay, which means any impacts that would occur at the surface, okay, the potential for that to impact that aquifer, that vulnerability is very low.
I have a quick question on that last slide, if you can go back one.
Right there.
One more?
There?
Yeah. On the graph on the left, you go back to seventy-nine.
Yeah.
For that top well.
Yeah.
But the other well, you only go back to two thousand and fifteen. Why would you only go back to two thousand and fifteen and not seventy-nine to make them?
That, that's, their data ranges vary based on when they started putting equipment in the well. So that was, that's the farthest back that data set goes.
Yeah, yeah, that observed, they're continuing to put in observation wells all the time. It's a, it's a relatively new requirement with new, as cities put in new wells, they want additional observation wells to continue to keep monitoring the aquifer. So this is a relatively new observation well with just data back to that timeframe. It only gives you a seven-year picture here, if it's even, yeah, seven-year picture. You know, the other one gives you that forty-plus-year picture, a much better picture, but we just wanted to pick, that's the only other close observation well that's, that's in this proximity.
Because, yeah, if they were starting at the same time, it could be presumptuous that it doesn't refill quite as fast. But if it is truly an earlier well or a later well, then that makes sense.
Can we hang on for the questions just one second? I just want to see if they have any additional information that they want to share. Some of your questions may be answered.
Is there anything else, Tom, that you wanted us to cover at this point?
I do want to have a question. Is the city, so Seth and Rich and Dave are on the city's payroll. They represent us to provide objective information and evaluation to help make policy decisions. Tony is here on behalf of the county and is generously providing his time tonight. Are there any questions? As we went through this hearing, there didn't seem to be any questions related to transportation, County Road Two, et cetera. Is there anything that we want to ask Tony at this point? Otherwise, cut him loose.
Have a good night. Aren't you glad you came?
Thank you for coming, Tony.
Thank you so much.
Seth, could you talk about wastewater? One of the questions that came up a couple of times was, as they go through the process, and Niagara has indicated this, and we've looked at it, they will basically be taking out some of the normal hardness-type items that are included in just normal groundwater as they create their product that they're going to sell. And could you talk about wastewater, what, where it goes, how it works? There's, there's been a lot of questions about contamination coming from their wastewater discharge, things like that. Could you just talk about that issue?
Sure. So they're going to take the water, and so the city already does filtration of the water. So what we're trying to remove there is iron and manganese. That's the, that's the biggest contaminants we're removing from the water. So we're removing that already. That is, that water from the water treatment facility flows down when you backwash the filters, flows down into sanitary sewer, eventually ends up in the Met Council system, and that's because you guys are out of the wastewater business. You send it to Met Council. They take care of that and treat that. Same thing would happen here with Niagara. They would take the city water. They probably do some additional filtration to it and some additional treatment. I don't know exactly what their system is, probably some form of R O. So what they're doing is it's the same groundwater that comes out of the ground. They're removing, the biggest thing is going to be the hardness, same thing that you would be removing in your home. If you have a home water softener, that's calcium and magnesium. R O doesn't just remove that. It's very nonspecific. It's going to catch anything through that very small pore size, and so anything else that is in the groundwater, so other minerals that are in the water, that's what we, that's what we're pulling from four hundred feet in the ground, so there are minerals there. I know there was some mention about heavy metals. The city does not have heavy metals in their, their public water supply from the, from the wells. And so it's going to be calcium, magnesium, and those types of items that would be removed, and again, put into the sanitary sewer and pumped to the Met Council system for, to go treatment through their wastewater treatment facility. Really no different. It's actually the R O system that they're going to use, and I'm assuming that's what they're using. Really no different than your home water softener, except they're not using salt to do that. And so it's a little different process, but ending up at the same location, basically.
Seth, could you touch on the radium?
Oh, yeah, there was. And yeah, so radium is the other piece that the city has naturally occurring in the water. It's, and so that is also, that is removed from the filtration process. That radium absorbs on to the manganese particles, and we're removing iron and manganese through the filtration process. Again, that just ends up in the sanitary sewer and heads off to the wastewater treatment facility from there.
Now Seth, as an industrial user, they would need to get a permit specifically, in addition to paying us fees for the use of our local system, they also have to get a permit and pay fees to the Metropolitan Council as well, because of what they're putting down the pipe.
Yep, yep, just like any other, you guys take care of that on behalf of residents here, when you have connections to the Met Council. But they would have that same thing. They'd have their connection fees to the Met Council that they'd have to pay for discharging their sanitary sewer, and it's based on a volume basis.
Do they ask for subsidies for that?
Not from the Met Council, no.
I'll touch a little bit on the financial aspects of this as we're working our way down the list. So just, if I don't touch on that, remember to ask me, so. Anybody have any other questions on wastewater and wastewater discharge? Chris?
Well, this is, it's kind of related to what's not maybe about wastewater, but related to what you're doing. You're talking about the aquifer being able to recharge, a very large aquifer. Is there any studies about if you're doing any, like, specific, very high concentration pullout, how quickly that particular area refills compared to the whole aquifer as a whole?
Yep, they're, they look at that all the time, and so that's the, so the water level data, so that we're monitored. There was another question of, I think we answered the question on, hey, we're pulling water level data all the time. The city has water level monitors, I think, in every one of their wells. They're taking that data. I think it's instantaneously, so they have reams of data. That has to be submitted. I don't know if it's monthly, or I think it's annually they submit that data, and all that data is being looked at. So that's not just for Elko New Market. Think of all the communities across the Twin Cities and areas that use this aquifer. They're, they're gathering that data and looking at all of that. Part of the D N R request, and so I mentioned the D N R, they're the main, they do the water appropriation permit. The Minnesota Department of Health comes in to play with well construction. And so as we go through that process of when you put in a new well, the D N R will often ask for a pump test, and that pump test will range anywhere from sometimes one to two days, to seven days, to a month. And they're looking at that, and naturally, you're pumping that well twenty-four-seven at that, the capacity of the well, say it's a thousand gallon a minute well, you're pumping that and you're watching how that impacts the entire aquifers and any other surrounding wells that may also be in that. So the D N R watches, goes through all of that, and only until you go through that process are you given the fully permitted well.
Just another comment. You mentioned that you assume that they were doing an R O system, but if there were any kind of chemical processing, that would change the, if they're doing any kind of chemical processing to purify the water or whatever else they're doing there, that brings you to a whole other realm of M S D S, sort of material safety data sheets for chemical processing, handling chemicals, storing chemicals, all of that would be part of that as well.
Yep, yep. And so just like the water treatment facility that is here, that the city operates, there are chemicals there used to make sure we're removing iron and manganese and the radium from that.
Proper storage and handling of those chemicals. So if they're using more than an R O system.
They would have to go, that would be through the building official would be handling all those pieces to deal with all that.
They'll need to be, um, no, they'll, any hazardous type materials will be regulated through Scott County. They'll need to be licensed through Scott County. And they'll do regular inspections of the facility and their storage areas and.
Thank you. Janelle, you had a question?
Yes, yeah, if I'm not mistaken, Elko New Market is just about at its permitted water use, and you're having to make a new application to the D N R, which would double the amount of water that you're pulling out right now. Is that correct?
It would actually more than double what we're pulling out right now.
Yeah, so you're, so you have, you're doing a whole new application to the D N R.
Correct.
Because adding this, this Niagara bottling plant would put us over our current application, even though we're getting close.
We would need to make the request either way, but the Niagara proposed project influences how large that request is. Maybe Seth or Rich, you can talk about the request.
Percentage put up on the board with that pie chart?
Yeah.
Included the request plus our own growth.
Yeah. Did that answer your question, Janelle?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of people that probably didn't know that you were making an application. That hasn't been very transparent. I guess that was my reason for my comment.
And on that one, making those requests are generally, they're, they're usually not a controversial item. They're usually made administratively, and they're not, and they're commonly made by communities as they, especially. commonly made by communities as they, especially growing communities, as they grow.
Understood, not adding a water bottling plant.
So any more questions on water or sewer or sewer waste?
Just one other thing, so in the presentation, do you say that there's already a water supply pipe that's already on that side of thirty-five?
Yes, yes.
So they already got under thirty-five or whatever they need to do to get that over there?
Correct. Yep, you remember the large project along County Road Two last summer?
Yeah.
That was, back in twenty-twenty-one, that was the project to extend the water mean out there, and then you've done sewer, yes.
Can they comment on the, you know, forever chemical PFAS, you know, risk? Seems like there's a very shared resource, I know there's like, it seems like ten.
With the, with the vulnerability talk, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and the MDH is sampling, you know, every public supply well, I think, in the state, and, you know, I mean Seth can address maybe the treatment side of that or how that's being handled, I'm sure they may have some communities that have had to deal with it. But as far as, you know, a surface contaminant, you know, there'd have to be a source that was here locally, okay? To, to create something that could infiltrate and impact the aquifer locally here, okay? If not, maybe, you know, it's, it's from some other source, which, you know, that's been identified throughout the metro area, so.
Yeah, the, the PFAS you're talking about, obviously it's a, it's a topic that's been discussed a lot, a lot here in Minnesota, you know, that's over in Woodbury Lake, Elmo area, Cottage Grove, that is that area, that is not found in other areas, you know, and it's, we, there's, the Department of Health is sampling that all the time and going around and pulling that from not only here in the metro area, but all around the state and, and monitoring that.
So we should contact the Department of Health to find out their, all of their information that they've been doing, because on one hand, you kind of said that they'd be on top of this checking it, and then I heard you use the word annual. Annual means one time a year.
Well, that, well, that was for the water level data that's being collected daily or every minute sometimes in locations. I can't remember when that is submitted to the DNR, or to the Department of Health and DNR, if that's on an annual basis or if it's on a monthly basis.
So you don't know?
I don't know, no.
You could call them though.
Well, I will.
That's public information.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
Any other questions on?
Question about the water. If, I mean, since this aquifer is so huge and amazing, and we have so much water, why do cities encourage us to take shorter showers, to flush the toilet less? And why, why would they do that, and then yet say, oh, but they can do that, we've got three hundred and ten million gallons per year?
There's a couple reasons, one is just for the sake of your own water bills, but that's not the total answer.
It doesn't matter, and Elko, they're going to be high no matter how many times you flush a toilet.
Tom will maybe get to some of that when he gets to his part, but the other thing is that operating a water treatment plant is, it's complex, and so if you've got water usage, it's going up a lot and then down, because everybody's watering when it's hot at the same time, and then they don't when it rains, and then they turn, so we do that to try to moderate usage. It does, it, it simplifies operations, but it also delays when we need to expand, because we design all of our facilities around the peak day. The average day, that's a piece of cake, neither or not.
But does your peak day include the three hundred and ten million gallons?
Absolutely, yes, it does. So, so those tips are, and they're, they're every, every town.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, and it's for those reasons. Yeah.
What question for Dave? If you've worked on glacial water supplies and you've worked out west, everyone here complains about how expensive our water is, but would you say our water is underpriced here for putting in a facility like this?
I don't price water, it's a good question.
Just curious, because I mean, people aren't moving from California to here putting up bottling plants because we're the most expensive place to get water from, you know? It's our, like, one of three resources we have in this community, pretty land, farmland, and this. So, we don't have anything else.
I just am reading something off the Niagara bottling website, and I just have a question because of something that, I'm sorry, the gentleman in the middle said you weren't exactly sure what kind of purification or filtration system that they used. So it says state-of-the-art purification, Niagara Bottling utilizes state-of-the-art purification, filtration, and disinfection technologies to produce safe and refreshing products for our customers to enjoy. Niagara Bottling is pleased to provide you this water quality report. So, it sounds good, it sounds like it's a great sentence that says we use state-of-the-art, but what is state-of-the-art?
You'd have to ask Niagara.
Right, but I mean, for the city to be making a decision to allow a bottling company to come in here, wouldn't you want to know what their state-of-the-art technologies are and how that could impact our community?
So with regards to our portion of the system, we want to know how much water they're going to use and in what volumes, you know, what sort of regularity, is it heavy peaking or is it steady? Because we're, we're supplying that to them, and we want to know what's coming out the backside, and actually more than us, actually the Met Council, and in their permit to the Metropolitan Council, they need to provide to the Met Council information related to the discharge that they have, because it gets into how the Met Council charges them with regards to their industrial, industrial discharge. What actually happens in the internal of the plant really doesn't affect how they treat it, doesn't affect the volume that we supply, and we need to be able to handle the volume that they discharge, but the nature of that discharge, which might get to the process, is really handled by the Metropolitan Council who's treating it once it comes out.
But if there's issues, I guess the reason I was bringing that up, not necessarily, like, is their water good or not, but if, if there's something that happens to that filtration system, if there's something, like somebody brought up earlier questions about, you know, if there's overflow, or if there's some kind of emergency, something to do with the plastics and water gets, you know, mixed with the plastics and they get in our soil and it's contaminated, whatever, that's all part of that, so it's not just about the, can we handle the amount and how much money is there?
Yep, but there are building code hazardous waste regulations, and in addition, aside from the city, other agencies which handle that, and that's true of every business where you go to get your oil changed, the question is what happens to the oil when it comes out? The city doesn't necessarily hold a public, I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic, but they don't hold a public hearing on it, there is regulations related to how they handle that hazardous waste, they have to be registered with their county for the handling their hazardous waste. So on some of those things, they're outside the scope of what the city is looking at or the city regulates as part of the project.
So what happened in California then, why did they have to, why are they being pulled out? I mean, something has to have happened, Wisconsin kicked them out. Do you not think in your mind that, you know, okay, where's the gray area here that I'm not seeing?
So.
Because you make it sound really black and white, and it's not, there's a gray area in there that other cities and other states and better business bureaus have figured out that Elko hasn't yet. I think the citizens have, but I'm just questioning, you know?
So when I get to my section, I'll talk about, first thing I'll cover is, why would the city consider it? Not saying the city's approved it, but why would we consider it? And then I'll talk about those pieces of it, I'll talk through the financials, because there's been questions about rates, I'll talk through that, and I'll get through that piece, so if you can put a pin in that, until we get to that, that would be awesome. If we're done with the water and sewer, there have been questions related to.
There's just one, a couple of quick other questions, so just, for the water that's going to them, is it going up to the Newmarket, you said they do, it was on the Newmarket Pressure System, correct? Not the Elko one? So is that water going up to the tower first and then over there, or is there enough pressure to pump it right over there?
Wherever it happens to be when they ask for it, so probably start with the tower, but aren't towers at this point are, I mean, there's a quick response when you pull any amount of water out that a pump will also kick in, so it's probably a combination.
Are those pumps sufficient to handle that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, I guess all the, the technology, are there going to be needing improvements in the system?
We did a flow test last week, opened two hydrants out there, and we got over four thousand gallons a minute, and they're asking for something like seven hundred, so it's.
Okay, so the pumping system's fine, and then I guess this comes to the, like the wear and tear, it is going to add your, you know, quadrupling this, the load on the system, that's going to provide more wear and tear, and that is a sophisticated system. Are they paying for some of that additional wear and tear, or through their just normal water fees, or?
Our rates are set based on operation, maintenance, repair, and replacement costs. I don't know if, Tom, you're going to touch on that. Do we want to touch on the acceleration question of expansion, stuff like that, or will you be covering that?
I think that would be something that I would ask you to cover, and I can talk about the financial aspects, I can touch on it at a high level and if there's more technical questions.
Do you want to get into that now, or, or get into your stuff?
I'll, I'll, I'll provide an overview as part of my stuff.
Okay.
Mr. Emery, back to that. Is there enough deserved capacity in the current water towers that we have for when they start to draw out for the bottling?
So it's actually, what you're talking is the same question, where, so we will get, we will get to that.
All right, can we bring water and sewer to a close? And I'd like to have Niagara respond to some of the questions specific to them. Those questions included Niagara's process, what is the process? Do they have, there's questions about the pellets and any hazardous materials related to that, et cetera, and we'll work through it, and if their team doesn't answer it, we'll ask them follow-up questions. I'm assuming they've been taking notes, I'm going to try and pull up the face of their team lead here, if I can get the mouse to respond. Patrick, do you just want to start answering the questions, and I'll work on getting you up as I can?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can certainly do that, thanks. Yeah, I, I think let's, let's back up and, and start with, you know, how does, where does the water come from and how does it enter the facility? And I can kind of talk at a real high level of what that looks like. Essentially, you know, the, the city water utility provides water to us through a meter just like they would to any other user on the system. The water's metered as it comes into the building, it goes into a brake tank, I believe a twenty-thousand gallon brake tank, and I've got some other team members on the call here too, they could jump in and correct me if I misspeak in any manner here. But there's a, a brake tank, so essentially that's a stopgap between, you know, the processing system and the supply. The water is stored, then pumped into the silos, exterior silos for storage, and as the process, as, as the beverage process is undertaken, then the water, water comes out of the silos, goes into the RO reverse osmosis system, so it's really a filtration system, where all the, you know, salt, any other minerals in the, in the incoming water again, from the, from the municipal supply, so this is the water that's coming into your homes as well, we basically just filter that water and purify it before it goes into the bottling process. Now, the, the one thing I want to point out too is that these are separate systems. The, the plastic pellets, they're, are delivered to the site and stored in the exterior silos, they're blown into those silos by tankers. There is a, a catchment system in place so that, you know, if any, anything would spill, it would catch those, those pellets. But those pellets are, are then blown into an injection mold machine to make the caps, and then also into a, a machine that makes essentially a preform, which looks like a little test tube, which is then heated so that it's malleable and blown into a bottle shape, and only then is when the water touches the bottle after it's been blown into that shape. Then the manufacturing process continues, the cap is placed on the bottle, the label is placed on the bottle, it goes down a conveyor, so then it's sorted into cases, shrink wrap, which is then heated and shrunk onto that case configuration, goes down the line into a palletizer, and then it's placed on pallets and then moved out into the warehouse for, for distribution or temporary storage. So that's really high level of the process. Tom asked me the question because I'm not sure what.
So are there any, there's just a normal questions related to, I think, environmental impacts, non-aquifer related, but just to the facility itself. Are there any fumes or odors that are emitted by the facility based on processing of the plastic bottles or anything like that?
No, no, you know, we, we did not emit any smells, we, we don't require any EPA air permits. This process is contained, it's essentially just taking a pellet, plastic pellet, warming it up so it's malleable, and then it's converted into different shapes, so it's not converted. The, we, we also do have, I want to point out, we do have a quality assurance lab, QA lab, with technicians on site doing regular testing of the products, so that's an ongoing process in, in every facility. And I see Chris on the East Coast just joined us, and might want to jump in, Chris Ward, you can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, everyone, evening, sorry, it's been a long day, I was on a flight to Minneapolis, which was subsequently diverted to Madison and then to Milwaukee, and then flown back to Charlotte. So I apologize for not being there in person, I just wanted to supplement what Patrick was describing with regard to our water processing. So you got most of the components there, I think what I want to highlight is that this is municipal water, so municipal water that would be safe for human consumption in its current form as it enters the plant is subsequently processed and purified further, so we're not adding any contaminants to the water, we're just taking that water and purifying it more, in much the same way that if you had an under sink RO system at home, where you port it through a ready filter, you're, you're just taking another step and removing contaminants. So from the city water brake tank, it actually goes through a carbon tower first, and that's designed to remove any chlorine, because oftentimes municipal water is chlorinated as a disinfecting step before it enters your house, that it doesn't get contaminated in the miles and miles of pipelines. After it passes through the carbon tower, it then goes through the reverse osmosis system, which extracts basically anything that's left in the water. So it removes bacteria, arsenic, heavy metals, dissolved salt, the minerals we talked about earlier, things that, you know, may have been missed elsewhere in the process of purifying that water. From there, it's fed into those external silos, for those fifty-thousand gallon, sixty-five foot, an inch tall water silos that are depicted on the site plan. That's our drinking water silo, and from there, it's fed into the bottling equipment where it's filled in the bottle and then capped, as Patrick outlined. So the, the blow molding, excuse me, the blow molding process for the bottles itself is self-contained, non-contact, and there's no thermodynamic conversion of the plastic itself in the sense of not converting any resin or, or creating any resin byproducts, it's just the application of heat to make it malleable, mold it into the preform and ultimately the bottled form. That's true for the caps as well. So all of our newer facilities have been zero-waste certified, so, you know, we're actually trying to eliminate anything going to the landfill from anywhere within our operations. Bottles that are deformed in the manufacturing process are re-ground on site, back in the pellet and extruded a second time, so there should be no contaminants that leave the facility, you know, that are the result of our bottling processes on site. And hopefully that answers the question about the introduction of contaminants, you know? It's literally the RO reject and the carbon tower backwash that is pumped into a wet well and then into a pH neutralization system before it's discharged into the sanitary sewer to Met Council. So that's basically the concentrated stream of salty, frackish water from the ROs. That's really the only waste product that's discharged, and again, you wouldn't find anything in that RO reject stream that wasn't already present in tap water, so. Hopefully, that answers that question, provide a little bit more context. I'm happy to answer any other technical questions that council members may have.
I'd like to request that we table this hearing because of the late hour. I just don't think we're going to be able to get through all these questions. I just don't think we're gonna be able to get through all these questions that are answered, and I just don't think it's reasonable to expect these people to sit on these chairs for four and a half hours.
That's a question for the commission, whether or not they feel they have, so a lot of this is providing information to the public. I think the question is for the commission whether or not they have sufficient information at this point.
No, I, I, actually, my question was, I request that we table this, not finish it, table it.
I, I understand. I'm speaking with the chair about what the options are, but it is up to the commission to decide whether they have sufficient information to make a decision, whether they need additional information and need to continue it, or whether they want to continue the meeting further into the evening. That is, that's at the commission's discretion.
And this is regarding the conditional use permit, correct?
Correct.
So commissioners, do you feel you have enough adequate information to make a decision on the conditional use permit regarding the height of the silos?
That wasn't my question, though. I actually requested that we table this topic because of the unreasonable amount of time then here.
I did close the public hearing a while ago, and we've taken a lot of time to answer questions and go through informations, and I appreciate all of it.
I don't think that we're done. We're not done.
So, the, the public hearing tonight, like I mentioned earlier, was regarding the conditional use permit for the, the height of the silos, to allow that, that additional height. And that's the information that was provided in the, the meeting tonight. Everything else that is being addressed are wonderful questions. I like hearing all the concerns. I like hearing all of it. It's great. I appreciate that. So everything that's being, all this additional information that's being added and questioned are, is not directly related to the height of the silos and the conditional use permit. It's related to the Niagara Bottling Company and them coming here. And that is where it's been suggested for the December 15th city council meeting. So all this information, like, all these questions are gonna be added into the informational packet. That's gonna be given to the city council, and you're gonna have access to that, too, on the city website, am I correct, beforehand? So you can look at that, too, and you have another additional opportunities to get more information, to get your questions answered, and your voice is heard at the December 15th city council meeting. And they're ultimately, they're the, the decision-makers. We just provide recommendations based on the information, and we have to follow guidelines, and statutes, and laws, and all that. And that's what we have to make decisions off of. City council, those are the people that can actually make change or decisions based on-
Table this and not move forward with the vote, because of the late hour.
So it has nothing, like I mentioned-
But can you make that decision to table this and not move forward with the vote?
This is why, so again, I'm addressing the commissioners and asking them if they feel confident that they have enough information to vote on this item of the request for conditional use permit to allow first construction of silos, which exceed the city's maximum height requirement in the I-1 zoning district. So I'm, Tara, I'm just gonna go down the line. Tara, do you feel like you can, you have enough info?
Yes.
Okay. Melissa?
Yes.
Brad?
Whether we table it, approve it, or deny it, they can change to a 50-foot silo without any, anything other than a permit. So this meeting is just-
This is the first step of many that you guys can do, to have the people's voices today be heard, to make a difference.
Ma'am.
It won't affect the, the outcome of tonight's meeting to, to do any of that.
So he's saying whether we table it, deny it, or approve it. So it, it can just stay at 50 feet, and they can figure out how to go around that, and, and they don't need an apartment or do anything. So it, regardless of the decision tonight, it can always be changed.
So you're denying it, then?
I've not done asking, I'm not done asking the commissioners.
If you can let the commission have their discussion, the public hearing is closed.
Yes. Do you feel like you have enough?
Yes, I mean, regardless if we do 50 feet or 65 feet, I mean, volume, volume, let's add another silo. So.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, what I can offer is that our staff and experts, unless they have another pressing engagement this evening, would stay for a little bit to answer some questions one-on-one. But we do have a whole list of questions and concerns that have been raised-
Yes.
-that, when we go to the council, they're a little more relevant to the policy decisions, overall policy decisions they're making.
Yes.
We now have a good list of items to include in the presentation there, and as part of that presentation, try and answer as many of these questions as we can right up front.
That would be great.
But tonight, I know there's people that came. They may not be able to come later. And so our dedicated staff and consultants would be willing to stay for a little while longer, not indefinitely, to try and answer some of these additional questions and some one-on-one conversations.
Sure.
But after that, they would need to call us between the meetings, or, again, there's a whole nother opportunity, and we know what questions we need to answer at the 15th.
Okay. So it sounds like we're okay with moving forward on taking a vote on this item? And then additional staff will stick around for, for a little bit, just to answer any additional pressing questions? Okay, thank you. So in regards to the request for a conditional use permit to allow construction for the silos, I'm gonna pull up my thing here. Are there any concerns related, from the commissioners, related to increasing, to allowing this conditional use permit?
It sounds like they're willing to meet the additional setbacks required.
Yes, they are. And it, it, yeah, it does meet the, meet the setbacks in the extra conditions related to it, so I don't-
I think they're on the south end of the project, too, so, not on the north end, so.
Yes, from the picture I saw. Okay. Anyone feel like they want to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow construction of silos which exceed the city's maximum limit? For the 60 feet and the 65.9 feet?
65 feet, nine inches.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the conditional use permit to allow construction of silos which exceed the city's maximum height requirement of the I-1 zoning district.
Anyone want a second? All second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
So for the council meeting, can you guys provide the information from other commissions from other cities? So that was a question that we had come up a lot, so.
What was the actual vote tally? By here, by here, whose aye and whose nay?
For four, approve, one nay.
So with regards to the other, the other city's question, we're not contacting cities where they decided not to go. We've been contacting cities where they decided to go, because the reason is, what do they actually like when they get there? The rest is just pure, it's speculation. And so we've contacted communities where they've located recently, because the people that were involved in the process and have worked with them are still there, and there hasn't been a lot of turnover. So we've contacted cities, and we're still in the process of contacting cities. When you have a lot, when you're looking at providing a subsidy, and you're looking at doing things to enable a large corporate citizen coming into the community, you want to make sure that you're not, it's not a bad decision. Everybody's raised those concerns, and quite honestly, all the questions that everybody's asked tonight, we have asked internally, and we've evaluated internally as well. We try to do our due diligence as best as possible. And when we've contacted those cities, and we haven't received feedback from all of them yet, but the cities we've contacted, and there's, and there's roughly half a dozen that we've contacted, they've all basically had no issues, positive responses about working the company, no negative feedback or notable issues that they've had. So from a municipality's perspective of the business being located in the community, we haven't been made aware of any issues yet, but we're still in that process of contacting those cities and trying to get that information.
You could just Google it. It's all over Google lawsuits and everything.
So I would like to, can, can I finish this piece out? Okay. So is there any general business?
No.
No? Miscellaneous?
There was a miscellaneous item in the pocket related to a reduction in the parking requirements based on their actual needs, and a analysis based on the ITE manual parking requirements as opposed to city parking requirements. So that was just a supplemental memo for your information.
Okay.
And also the FAQ that was posted on the city's website included in your packet for reference.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? Okay. All right. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 11:42 PM? Give me a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 11:42 PM. I appreciate everyone coming, all the comments, everything. Thank you.